Kia ora and good morning everyone and welcome to the council meeting of Monday the twenty fourth of February two thousand and twenty five. In terms of health and safety, if the alarm sounds, please make your way to the nearest emergency exits. The assembly point is across the road from the Bay of Plenty Regional Council Building. Please be aware that this meeting is being live streamed and the video will be publicly available on YouTube. Members, could you please remember to speak clearly into your microphones and only one speaker at a time for clarity? And just a reminder to please turn off mobile phones. I'd just like to hand to councillor Baker if he could please open with a karakia. Thank you.
A mai riorae te whare, mi noa tatau. Ait kaiha ngaka inoakea kui ka manakitia mai matau i te neyata, a manakitia o matau fauna kai nga kai ngamaha. Manakitia e ra e ma wiiwiana, e raukoreana, e paniana, uki a mai o to mai rangia ta faikirangi i a matau katai te neira. Kua ora i ki toingoa tapu. Aminé.
Kia ora, outapu. We now move to apologies. I believe everyone's here. No, no apologies, no apologies. Thank you. Next section is the public forum. I'd like to invite Fred Hutchins, Ford Treasurer on behalf of the Tauranga Harbour Protection Society, Ti Hononga Ki Ti Awanui Memorial Park to Elizabeth Recreational Connection. Morning Fred, if you come forward. And if you can just turn on your microphone by pushing the red button to go green. You'll have five minutes to talk with questions. Thank you.
Thank, thank you and good morning. And thank you for giving me a time to speak to you on behalf of the Tauranga Harbour Protection Society. Jan Jamison, her secretary, gives her apologies for not being able to address you this morning. So instead you get me, Fred Hutchings, the boring treasurer. The society is consistently advocated on behalf of the harbour and a number of landowners on significant risks the council faces with this Elizabeth Street Memorial Park project. I note that management has asked you to approve one of four options. Or make some brief observations on each of them. Option one. To suspend all committed work. Now, this is an attractive option when resources are limited and there are great, greater priorities for the city. Transport network efficiency to highlight one. It does leave the door open like the phoenix for this project to raise again. Two. One of the key risks to this project is the riparian rights held by sixteen landowners. We suggested a joint application to the High Court for a judgment to provide certainty before proceeding and any further, any further. And we believe this step will save money in the long run. The last communication received on this matter was in November twenty three. At no stage has the process and steps to make that application been discussed. Consultation with landowners that was undertaken to date whilst at a conceptual level has been interesting. But I must stress, it's been completely inadequate for landowners to understand the impact it will have on their security and privacy. Access rights to the harbour as they have under riparian rights. And this one is one that would really concern me. The ability to repair existing seawalls to protect the escarpment toe particularly now with extreme climate change induced weather events and sea rise. Rubbish and sea layers collection points and the impact on the wildlife and seabed. Now, option two has merit and that will bring certainty and clarity to landowners and the council on riparian rights. And because the design will need to be undertaken, landowners will also be able to assess the impact of their project on them. There is a significant optics cost. Option three does not bring clarity to the riparian rights issue, but does help meet the objective of providing visual access to the harbour and will restore the protection of escarpment at the end of Fourth Avenue. I say visual because in front of the escarpment recreational activities will be limited by access tidal flow other than at low tide. Also, the harbour bed is not white sand. It is stony and muddy. We do swim there, but it's not attractive. You have to swim with shoes on. Option three comes at significant capital cost and with considerable construction risk. This is illustrated by recent projects that the council has experienced with the sewer pipe under the harbour and the harbour restoration work of the walkway from the strand to harbour side. Option four does bring clarity to the riparian rights issue and has the same construction and cost issues as noted in option three. In summary, if I put my landowner's hat on and as a rate payer who rates seem to increase consistently, I would like to see council expenditure contained and directed to projects of high significance against your council's significance and engagement policy, not ones as this has been, which has been assessed as median. Hopefully I'm within my five minutes. I think so. Thank you, mayor, and thank you for listening.
Thank you very much for addressing us. Have we got any questions, councillor Scholar?
Thank you for that. Can you just confirm are you a resident in that area and if so, are you one of the ones with riparian rights?
Yes, I am.
Thank you very much for addressing us. Now I ask Brian Scantlebury to come and address us around the same project. Thank you. You'll have five minutes, Brian, including questions. If you can just push the, the red button to make it green before you start talking. Thank you.
I'm speaking as a resident and rate payer. I'm also a member of the Tauranga Harbour Protection Society for whom you've just heard, from whom you've just heard. Mister Mayor and councillors, I'm asking that you vote for number one option, that is to suspend all non-committed work. I would further ask that the word suspend be replaced with cease or stop and that the remaining six million sitting in your budget at the moment be reallocated to projects beneficial to rate payers. A short background, I think, might be helpful because most of you have not experienced this project. It's been going on, as you might be aware, for twenty plus years. We've seen plans, maybe six or seven so far, that were supposed to have been definitive. We have seen nothing of recent that is definitive. The process, I believe, is still going on. These old plans, though, must be taking up one hell of an incredible amount of TCC archival storage space. And then there's the panoply of rationale and ever-changing justifications given for continuing the spend through those years. Are we going to keep this fueled up? And if so, why and for what? Seriously? And there's been a frequently changing heads of departments or divisions put in charge of the project, about ten or twelve so far by my rough count over those years. And it has cost a lot of pennies. A challenge to you to prove me wrong, rate payers so far by my estimation have frittered away some twenty-plus million so far. In the language of your report, there have been no deliverable outcomes. Not a grain of sand has been turned for that gargantuan expenditure. We ask, is this really the best and most valuable use of that seemingly often neglected resource, rate payers' back pockets? Your worship, in your stated enthusiasm for transparency, should the considerable wasted or sunk costs to achieve nothing so far and the probable future costs, if you were to consider proceeding, be made clearly public so that rate payers can start to get a sense of the real degree of difficulty and the impacts on the of three Ps. I'm sure all heard of the seven Ps of decision-making or management. I have three. Practicality. All of those plans over the twenty years should have shown the projects impracticality and thus the impossibility of realistic budgeting. The project's scope has been continually diminishing while the costs, the costs, councillors and mayor, have been escalating exponentially. Possibility is my second P. Then there's the evolution of the proposed plans and some of the solutions proposed to overcome the impossibility of what I call the dream. Drawbridges is just one of those that comes to mind. Yes, drawbridges. Contemplate it for a moment and contemplate the problem they are expected to solve. Drawbridges? And on that point, where does the coastal marine area consenting fit into everything that's going on? My third P is probability. Probability is that it's never going to be more than a dream. I am unsure whether you all are familiar with the subject eight hundred to nine hundred metres. That we're, the subject eight hundred to nine hundred metres at all tidal stages. But I urge you to become familiar. I'm sure you will understand why probability remains a problem and will always be. You now have four options in front of you. Option one proposes to stop the wastage now. The report, your report, actually states as an advantage the unlikelihood of full project delivery. So stopping would of course eliminate that unlikelihood because it's and the cost associated with continuing to reach the point where it probably won't be fully delivered. Option two asks you to consider another one point two million. One point two million for preparatory work only to get a riparian rights determination. None illegal, just a preparatory work. Option three proposes node enhancement only. A fancy way of saying improvements to existing access points, including fixing neglected Fourth Avenue Road end for sure. But that's for another six point nine million. Option four combines options two and three for just another eight million. Coastal, the coastal marine area consenting hasn't even been mentioned in any of that. What has been mentioned, though, is the legal viability risk. The legal viability risk. What should be clear is that these are estimates and that they will surely inflate and thus realistically require much greater budgeting allowances. Now, assuming you get through all that and complete the project and at many more undefinable as yet millions, you still don't have much more than we have right now. You don't have much more than we have right now, low to mid-tide walkability. We have attempted to be strong in our advocacy for improving and protecting the natural amenity and improving public access. Back to the beginning, whilst we can see that option two would settle the property and riparian rights issue, it does not exist, sorry, does not address the impacts on the harbour, the natural amenity, or any outstanding features or environmental consenting. A question, can you please tell me of any other plans that have cost this sort of money to achieve nothing? Not even the Auckland Harbour Bridge Walkway. How has council allowed this to happen? Understanding all the impacts of additional costs on rate payers this time, I urge you to take the only genuinely responsible position and decide on option one, please. Now more than ever, the question needs to be answered. What is the best use of that often neglected resource, the rate payer? And there's more. There's geotech issues, there's whole of life costs that I don't see explained anywhere. There's government calls for curbing unnecessary expenditure. For some people, there's security issues along there that would be would, would be increased dramatically. And there's also a case where, over the years, people who've shifted into the area, and I know of a couple, have contacted the council before acquiring them and have been assured by council staff that it will never happen. So again, I ask, why are we still at this and how much longer is it going to be expected that we will have to keep this up? Thank you for listening.
Thank you very much. Have we got any questions? Councillor Crather?
Good to see you. I guess my question is, I understand you're thinking for option one, but you know that there are people who want this to happen. And so because it's a political environment, there could be councillors elected in the future who want to push this ahead. So if we get the legal opinion, my understanding of the idea from staff is to decide once and for all, is it even possible? So you've talked about possible, probable. I tend to agree it's expensive and I haven't seen a pathway forward figuratively or literally. So so I guess it's, you know, why not just get the legal opinion? I know it's more money, but it might either kill it dead or figure out what, you know, we can and can't do.
And, and that's definitely been a consideration in terms of that proposed option. The reason I have suggested killing it with option one by changing the terminology. And of course, I would have hoped that that would have meant it would be removed from your ten-year plan. So that at least it would be that span of time before another councillor might consider raising it again. But I appreciate what you say. It would definitely, a legal opinion would definitely do that and we're not averse to trying, testing that. We have research and opinion that suggests that it is an unlikely event that anybody would grant the munition of the riparian rights as they exist to sixteen or eighteen people along there. So go for it if you want to waste more of our money, but I'm pleading for efficiency economy and I'm backing the government's calls for you to be a little more circumspect with spending.
Councillor Taylor?
Morning Brian, thanks for your input this morning. Just wondering, you just mentioned then you had some research that you'd gathered. Is that something you can share with the councils?
That would have to go to the, it's not mine, it's the Harbour Protection Society's. That would have to go to the committee there. But my immediate thought would be that probably not at this point because obviously we'd want to know where this is all going first.
Councillor Scholar?
Thanks Brian, nice to see you. So just, I, I understand and I, I also have some concerns about the costs, but it is, I'm a rummer and so running from the city all the way to Memorial Park along the water is a wonderful possibility. Can you, what's your view on why you wouldn't think that would be a nice amenity to offer to the city, which we're trying to make more vibrant, trying to utilise the harbour a little bit more?
Thanks, Jean. Apart from the impact on the residents and the impact on the council's budget, yes, obviously any additional facility, if it's reasonably done, is a nice facility. I'm not arguing that it couldn't be that. I mean, I could offer you another dozen, give him five minutes, nice facilities I could ask you to do as well. The point about this is that it, it does threaten riparian rights and therefore may not be possible anyway. In fact, our view is it wouldn't be possible anyway. It, it affects people's property rights other than riparian quite dramatically. And I don't see council's role as doing things that are detrimental to properties, to, sorry, to their rate payers' property rights at it to provide nine hundred, eight hundred metres of something when there's within a hundred metres of a road that provides the same thing.
Thank you very much, Brian. Appreciate your time today. Thank you. We move on to our next item, acceptance of late items. Is, is there any late items? No late items? Thank you. Any confidential business to be transferred into the open? I'm not aware of any business to be transferred from public excluded to open. Change of the order of business. Is there any change? Again, I'm not aware that we need to shift any business around, so we'll move on. Confirmation of minutes, which we have none. And declaration of conflict of interest. Does anyone have any conflicts of interest? If you become aware of a conflict as we go, please make that clear. And again, deputations, presentations and petitions, we have none. So we move on to item ten, which is recommendations from other committees. This is to do with an item on the agenda around the rates today. And the recommend, recommended tree report comes from the Accountability, Performance and Finance Committee on rating categories and rating policy. And obviously we're going to discuss this in eleven point three and that's why, and that's, I guess, how this has come to, to council. I just want to know, has anyone got any questions on that to, to any of the staff? I think it's quite self-explanatory. Therefore, I'll ask for a mover and seconder on the recommendations. Councillor Taylor, councillor Roseboom, thank you. Is there any discussion on this? Okay, as I said, we'll be talking about this in eleven point three later on. And therefore I ask all those in favour to accept that report. I and those against. That is carried. Thank you very much. And now we move on to the business section of the meeting and we will start with what we've heard about in the public forum, which is Ti Hononga Ki Ti Awanui Memorial Park to Elizabeth Recreation Connection. I believe we've got Gareth Wallace, Barbara Dempsey, Amanda Davies from our internal staff. And we've also got Rebecca Ryder from Boffa Miskill and Craig Bachelor from Cognito Consulting that will report to us and talk to us about this.
Atumari, tato. Just by way of introduction, like Brian said, this project has been kicking around the community for twenty plus years. It's also, I think, like Fred said, been kicking around the internals of our organisation for an extended period of time. It was with me for a while. It's with Barbara at the moment. But we tossed a coin and I was going to intro it. I'm going to hand over to Rebecca and Craig that are going to talk to a little bit about that background. They're going to talk a little bit about where we're at currently, what work has been done recently. And as is detailed in the report, we need a decision from you guys today. So the, the most recent decision from a council was to proceed with certain pieces of work, which is what we've been doing. This came up as part of our review of the capital programme as a piece of work that you were interested to find out a little bit more information about. So we're here today to share that with you, answer any questions, then ultimately get a decision from you so we know how to proceed from here. Yeah, I'll hand over to Rebecca and Craig, then Amanda, and then we're all happy to take any questions. Kia ora.
A mordena. Craig and I are going to share the sort of presentation this morning, just to give you a bit of background on the project in terms of our involvement. But also, as you've heard, there's been a long history to this project and it's in various ideas or conception of ideas. So I'll pass over to Craig just to quickly run through a broad understanding of how long the project's been around.
It's Rebecca and good morning, everyone. You've already heard a bit about the background, so I won't dwell on that too long. Other than technology, yes, this project's been in the council policy and strategy documents for about twenty years. And during that time, it has had a range of objectives, not simply a walkway. But it has, that has varied over time. And it's always been highly controversial. There's always been questions around the riparian access. There's been concerns around cost. So there's nothing particularly new in that. But yeah, I think acknowledging that if you could deliver, it would be a great outcome. And hence why I guess it stayed within the, the council policy framework as long as it has. The current inception of the Recreation Connection is anchored in the Tapapa Spatial Plan, which I think is an important consideration. And when you look at the Tapapa Spatial Plan, there's a strategic direction that focuses on residential living opportunities and improving the public realm. And this project is, is part of that wider range of initiatives. So there is a concept called the Green Necklace that's in the spatial plan. And this is a component of that. And that has several features. It's around the, the water edge experience, reconnecting the city centre to the waterfront, visual and physical access to water and active node improvement along the harbour edge. And since this, since the Tapapa Spatial Plan was formulated and the Cameron Road Stage One has been completed, which really does provide that to primary multimodal link, the emphasis on this project has shifted to a less, less of an emphasis on the walking and cycling, but it's given a lot more flexibility around how those activities can be incorporated into the overall design. So the others handing, handing over to Rebecca to talk about the project objectives which have been agreed.
So early on in the project, recognising that it isn't delivering a transportation network outcome, the project objectives were put forward to, put forward for decisions to be made on whether they still supported the outcome for the project and the three key project objectives which we have were adopted back in August two thousand and twenty-three. And broadly cover the supporting urban intensification being the first objective and the broader Tapapa Peninsula by offering high, high amenity public spaces and recreation options. The second was creating high-quality and legible accessible waters. The second was creating high quality and legible accessible water's edge experience. And in doing so, reconnecting the city centre to its waterfront heritage and landscape context. And then providing the third option, the third, sorry, third objective is providing a recreation connection that improves public enjoyment and accessibility to and along the harbour's edge. So these, these were the objectives that quite often, when you're working on a project, you need to always pull back to. So this, this is where we were reconnecting the project brief to these objectives. Can we just move the slide presentation, just one back one, yes, or forward actually, forward one? To project structure if we can, thank you. So the project, as you may have seen in the last LTP, had a budget of, I think, $19 million that was dedicated to two stages. Stage one being the Strand Connection, which is the effectively what we've got down here from the Mata Pahia Rail Bridge through to the Strand, the existing Strand Waterfront. So that was the replacement of that boardwalk connection and, and the installation of an underpass rather than walking. I think if some of you had had experience, walking behind the harbourside building, there was an easement that provided some access, but it wasn't overly accessible or desirable. So that, that has been completed. And the second stage was looking at this particular option, the connection from Memorial Park through to effectively Elizabeth Street where we are right now. Over a period of time, working through this project and in a presentation and a report that went up to council back in August, the 25th of August 2023, it was just recommended to divide the project into two parts. The remaining component, option B being the waterfront recreation connection and option C, avenue, avenues connections with a dedicated budget towards each of those. The project at the outset began partnering with Hapu, an early engagement occurred with that. And the project name Te Honongo Kiti Awanui was gifted through that process. It's been a co-design process right from the get-go and a draft MOU exists between TCC and Hapu, but has yet to be finally formalised when the project was about to be and the project went on hold. Moving to the project timeline, just so you've got a quick synopsis of where we are on the current project timeline for the stage two. The dashed red line is effectively where we're at, we're just halfway through the next two circles, which was effectively, we have, we were 50% to 75% through the development of the final concepts for option B, the memorial connection along the waterfront and the final concepts, final draft concepts to, for option C, the recreation connections down through the avenues. And these were to go back to the landowners, we were doing landowner engagement adjacent, for those landowners adjacent to the avenue connections, just to look at any logistic and property issues relating to how that would interface to the street, being a road reserve and dealing with some, looking at some of their own knowledge around that space as well. Then, so that's effectively where we're at at the moment. And we were in October, put our pens down and been on hold and over that period of time. The engagement that we've had with the landowners, we haven't been out to wider public engagement on this project. It's been with direct affected parties engagement. So waterfront adjacent landowners for the memorial connection, as you've heard from two of them today, and in a representation for the Taonga Harbour Protection Society and with Mana Finua. The engagement we've had with the landowners has been one-on-one engagement through, showing them through design typology, trying to understand some of those access and riparian rights matters. Design workshop evening, we had then moved on to the avenues connection, design, concept designs and one-on-one engagement with landowners, which introduced new landowners to that because of the street connection to it. The, we've also had a, one meeting, and I heard earlier, with the Taonga Harbour Protection Society at TCC and some correspondence with their legal council and representatives for communication processes. This is, oh, if we move, that was on the second slide, sorry. Let's skip through to the next, next. Going forward. Engagement and moving forward one more please. This, this is just an update on the design progress. So for your understanding, is the waterfront connection and recreation connection along the waterfront begins right where we are here in this building, all the way through to Memorial Park. There was connections through to the avenues. You'll see, so zigzag lines running up and hatch or dotted lines running up through the avenue connections and investigating that. There are two, sorry, three connections existing across the avenues. We have First Avenue, which already has an access track down through there and primarily is used by landowners to access their properties who don't have vehicular access to their properties. We have Second Avenue and Fourth Avenue with no physical access down through the banks. And you've heard that they are very steep and have some geotechnical challenges to them. And then Fifth Avenue East and Sixth Avenue, which incorporates the existing boat ramp or small boat ramp that is there. So in a kayak launching area of Fifth Avenue East. So those, they formed part of that. And when we began the project, identified that those connections, even with the memorial connection along the waterfront, will become more and more important as the city intensifies, to bring that city through to the Taonga Harbour waterfront. If I move to the second, next slide. The avenues connections was the sub-project that, that eventuated and that came out of feedback from the engagement with landowners and Taonga Harbour Protection Society around really investigating this avenues connection as the means of supporting the connection to the, to the Taonga Harbour. And as a result, they've been, if we move, keep moving through, I'm happy for you to flip through them every minute or so. We've developed some concepts for the First Avenue, that these haven't gone out to public. These are ones that we've had one-on-one engagement with the landowners and we're to go back to them with some more refinements to this, but have yet to do that. So First Avenue was an upgrade to that. Second Avenue was providing a connection down through that, through to the waterfront with a small landing at the base, recognising that intertidal and enabling, continuing to enable beach walking along that shoreline at mid tide and high tide, near to high tide. And then third, sorry, Fourth Avenue has the most challenging geotechnical constraints to it and has some slumping on it already. This, this area currently, we've looked at the option of providing staird access or pole, pile-driven access, stairs coming down to the bottom. So we looked at some options around that, around how to, how to achieve that. Graded access is impossible at both Second and Fourth Avenue. And then moving to Fifth Avenue, this was a small upgrade and a test run of a, of beach replenishment, which was an outcome that came out of engagement with landowners around, why not consider some beach replenishment works? And this end through working with our engineers identified that this end of the overall waterfront has less erosion than the northern end of that. So it was a test run to see whether some beach replenishment would work. And then Sixth Avenue was a sort of minor upgrade and tidy up to that area. There was a boat, boat ramp upgrade provided for in the Opex Renewals Budget, Renewals Budget. So it was trying to tie in with that and try and do some amenity upgrades to provide a node at that point. And ultimately, that's where we've landed and we were to go back to landowners to talk about those things in the final sort of adjustments we'd made based on some feedback that we'd had from them. And moving to, I guess, the next, next part of the project was really, as you've heard, there are a number of risks with the project and we've been advising council with our investigation and knowledge around that to assist in decision making. So pass over to Craig on that.
Rebecca, and again, you've heard about some of these already. So with property rights issues, the principal risk is around riparian rights, but also there are resource consents granted for some properties that provide things like ramps and boat sheds. So those rights have to be maintained. You've already heard, there's around 16 properties, that's about half of the properties along the waterfront that have riparian rights. So it's a significant, significant issue to address. So the response to the risk from a project's perspective is that we can manage our way through that by ensuring that the, that we maintain and enhance functionality for recreational use and boat access for those properties. So that, that approach has been based on some early legal advice we received about our ability to manage our way through. And through the engagement with landowners, the idea came through about seeking a declaration or some public legal confirmation of the ability to develop across the fronts of those properties. And that's the point we've reached with whether to proceed with that process and gain that certainty around the legal ability to modify the frontages of properties that have riparian rights. That's, that is, that is the primary legal risk. There are other issues, one of those that also mentioned by one of the speakers earlier, all the, or a number of the properties along this waterfront have significant natural hazard risks. That relates to land stability and coastal erosion. We heard from some of the property owners that over the last 20 years, there's been about 500 millimetres of drop of the beach level. So some significant change in like dynamic environment that needs to be managed. But the issue really is that a number of those properties have protection works on the, at the toe of the slopes. And it's important to recognise those and ensure that any design doesn't impede the ability to maintain those works. So that's another complexity for the project that has to be dealt with. And Rebecca's mentioned that for three of the properties at First Avenue, they rely on the foreshore for access for large vehicles. So again, another challenge in the design process. When it comes to the environmental components and which, the property rights are one thing, but there's also the issue of getting resource consents in this coastal marine area for the works. And the work done to date has done some preliminary assessment of effects relating to cultural values, heritage and archaeology, recreation use, landscape and ecology and natural hazards. So we've done a preliminary look at that to make sure that there, or we identified any potential fatal flaws for a resource consent process. Our conclusion is that there, there is a way through, it is consentable. It would never be easy, but it is, it is a feasible consent to obtain. There is strong alignment with national, regional and local policy frameworks around providing access to the, to the coastal environment, which is pretty the most significant upside of this project. But of course, in achieving that, you need to ensure that any of the adverse effects are also addressed. Yeah, so as, as mentioned, we, we reached, we concluded that the project is consentable under the RMA. But of course, that's, that's a contestable process, it'll be open to submissions and potential appeals. So we're, we're not naive about the process ahead to achieve that. So Rebecca, I don't feel any other comments on the design challenges in response?
Yeah, well, as you've heard, there are a number of challenges to this project and hence why it's been around for a wee while, around trying to solve those. Riparian rights being the primary one that needs, for, for the design process to move forward needs to resolve how that access should, should be provided. The existing consented structures and services, as you've heard about, the cultural effects on Ti Awanui and working with Mana Finua has been positive to date with regard to that. However, that's still something that needs to be addressed and worked through. The costs associated with the project, not only just, well, certainly the construction costs of building, building this, whether that's in one, one singular piece across, along the foreshore or whether that's in stages. And then the avenues connection itself doesn't require kneeling to deal with riparian rights matters. It's road, legal road reserve down to those, down to the foreshore at those points. And it's around, the main design challenge is integrating with the adjoining properties and ensuring that it's creating positive outcomes for recreation access.
Next slide please. So we have a range of options, I guess, for discussion and decision today. So option one is to suspend all the non-committed work on the project. So that would effectively see us wrap the project up as to where it's currently sitting and there'd be no further expenditure on the project. Next slide. Option two looks at the completion of the work that's required to get the legal determination done for the proposed design of the full Recreation Connection. So that sees a concept and preliminary design done. So we can undertake that assessment work and then take that through to get a legal determination on the property rights. One of the main advantages of that is it would give some certainty around the viability of the project going forward for both the landowners and council. It will provide some additional investment beyond what's in the current financial year. And that would be, have to be part of your considerations in terms of any expenditure on the project. Next slide. Option three is just delivering the node enhancement. So that's those enhancements that Rebecca showed just at the end of the avenues, which would improve connection through to the coastal harbour area. And that would provide some additional amenity and connection to the harbour for the community, particularly in the Tapapa Peninsula. Next slide. And then option four, which is, I guess, just looking back into the council decision that was made back in August 2023, which is to proceed with the development of the node enhancement as well as taking, undertaking the work to take the legal determination in conjunction with doing that design work, which would give clarity around the future of the project and where it stood for both landowners and council for the legal determination. But would also, as part of the delivery of the capital work, provide those enhanced connections at the end of the avenues through to the foreshore area. And then once the outcome of that legal determination was known, the future of the whole Recreation Connection would then become an issue for the upcoming LTP as to whether that was a viable project for the next 10 years going forward or not, from a council perspective.
I'm pretty sure that's us, so happy to answer any questions.
Councilor Schola.
Thank you for that. Just on option one, you talked about no more uncommitted costs. Can you describe what are committed please?
At the moment, all design work has been halted back in October when the project went on hold. It would just be a matter of closing out those contracts. We're current with all the costs that have been incurred on those contracts to date.
Supplementary, so closing out a contract has costs or not? I just, you've specifically included the word uncommitted. So what are we talking about in terms of cost to close out?
There'd be very minimal, there'd be almost no cost to close out, yep.
So that's the 400,000 that we're talking about for 24, 25, is, is that already spent? Or is that, is that still up for grabs?
No, that's been spent, those are costs incurred to date.
Yep, cool. I had another question. You know, we, we heard from Brian, his estimate that there's been $20 million spent on this project. Have we got a, an idea of what we have committed over the years to this project?
We'd need to go away and add that up, no?
If we could have, have that added up, that would be, that would be really useful, thank you. Councilor Schola.
Thanks Jean, I'm just curious to know, considering this has gone on for 20 years and it's been pretty obviously contentious and a lot of landowners have a, have a strong view and then it's, but it's been pushed through as a, you know, would be a wonderful way to enhance and improve the amenity of the city. But considering that the big uncertainty is around the legality of it, has there never been any attempt to, to find that earlier? Why do we still not know after 20 years whether we could actually do it or not? Why do we still not know after twenty years whether we could actually do it or not?
As far as I know, this is the closest we've got to answering that question, but Rebecca might have more information.
A- as referred, there has been a legal opinion from council's perspective having a look at this project. But equally, um, as you've heard, the landowners have a um, a different legal opinion and hence why the process forward around a determination would give a little more certainty between parties.
Uh, councillor Coret.
In, in terms of the declaratory judgment, firstly, um, would it be appealable? If so, how much would it cost in terms of going through an appeal process? I'm just trying to establish whether the, those opposed would have the financial means to actually a- appeal it.
We've got the lawyers, maybe, maybe the lawyers can come and explain the process to us.
This definitely would be appealable, but we'll hand over to Andrew and Hemi.
So is, would it be a, a, an environment court, court judgment or the high court?
Welcome, Andrew and Hemi.
Morning, everybody. Uh, it would be a high court process under the declaratory judgments act and that would be subject to a right of appeal by either party.
Path to appeal?
Uh, so the timeframe, the actual substantive procedure itself would be six months to a year to get your determination from the high court. And then in appeal, you'd probably add at least another year on top of that process wise. Uh, for an appeal, again, it's just a ballpark estimate, but I'd say you wouldn't get change out of fifty to a hundred thousand. Thank you.
Uh, councillor Crowther.
Yeah, thank you. Um, yeah, I had a look at those um pictures and I guess what struck me was that, I'm aware that recently, um, I think it was thirty or so council staff committed to um universal design for council projects and um we've got twenty-seven percent of disabled, of residents are disabled and over twenty, twenty-one, I think it is, of sixty-five plus, et cetera. So I'm struggling, knowing the lay of the land there. It all looks nice on a picture, but how accessible for the, you know, let's say half of our community who struggle with steep steps, like have we got from all those avenues um universal design access?
Yeah, through the preliminary design phase, uh, your first avenue, second and fourth would not be able to provide that unless, of course, you had um quite substantive structures that would have basically take up the entire face of that slope in order to achieve a one and twelve gradient um with the landings that you need to provide every, every um thirty odd metres. So it's um, was determined really early on that accessibility from a universal access perspective wouldn't be provided on those, um, unless, of course, you invest in um mechanical means of, of achieving that. However, um Fifth Avenue, East Sixth Avenue and then um provide for that, yeah.
Um, councillor Taylor.
Uh, just talking about the nodes and as, as they currently exist, um, are they a health and safety risk? I just, um, they're pretty rough and ready at the moment.
Our observations, there has been erosion, um, more so to um Second Avenue and Fourth. Fourth, absolutely, there's been some slumping occurring um adjacent and on the edge of property boundaries, which those landowners have been in discussions with council on, um, and undercutting there. So um with the bank, so it has some, has some risk, yes. Um, so stabilisation would be needed to ensure um that the slope stability is there. Uh, however, the design process wasn't there to resolve all of the slope stability issues relating to that, that slope.
So essentially, we're up for something to repair that and get that stable at some point anyway, regardless of what happens here.
Yes, that was the part of the early geotechnical investigations and um we haven't yet had a report from Geotech to devise the outcomes. However, it was around providing for that access. Um, discussions with landowner to the north of Fourth Avenue has um indicated that there has been some slumping at the edge of that property. Um, however, the structure design was yet to be developed through structural engineering, but um looking to um stand on its own without having to rely on the slope itself to um slope stability entirely. So, yeah.
Councillor Morris, also. Councillor Taylor, keep, keep going.
Sorry, just one last one. Um, at what point south and what point north do the riparian rights start and end?
We do, we do have a map that we can provide. Um, we haven't bought it today, but um right, all the way, right from um Sixth Avenue, there are properties there with immediate riparian rights access. And at First Avenue, there are properties with riparian rights access. Uh, so um all the way through, that between uh Second and Fourth, there is, I think, one property with riparian rights. Um, however, the rest has a, um, quite a regular sort of spacing of that.
Councillor Morris.
Thank you, Hemi. Good morning. Uh, ignoring the nodes, how much uh would we be looking at for the core walkway between the, the rail bridge and Memorial Park?
Uh, so the estimate uh currently for the development of the full recreation connection would be twenty-eight point two million.
Is that with the nodes or without?
It is without the nodes.
Yeah, and so without the avenues connections?
Yep, that estimate was done on, on the presumption that that work would have already been completed.
And so there's six point eight million extra for the node.
And how, how um confident are we on the six point five million? It seems like a lot of work, um, which actually is, you know, relatively cheap for, um, you know, in the, in the scheme of the project, I guess.
Uh, yeah, so we were taking quite a conservative approach in terms of having quite a light touch on those nodes in terms of engineering solutions. So when you're looking at those in scartments, we were waiting for the Geotech information to come back and inform, you know, what that kind of detailed design would look like. Um, but as Rebecca has mentioned, we were trying, looking at standalone structures and interventions that wouldn't um, uh, wouldn't require a lot of cost in terms of having massive um stabilisation works or anything like that on those bank areas. If there's a risk, yeah.
So those, those nodes though include all the accessways from the avenues and the, and the upgrade to those roads, et cetera?
So it's, uh, as you can see on that map there, so um it was, so Elizabeth Street, that's Tunks Reserve, that's already been completed, of course. Um, then there was First Ave, Second, Fourth and then um Sixth and Seventh as well, Fifth Sixth and Seventh.
Yeah, thank you. Um, I had a question probably for the lawyers. Um, so the, the determination is, is obviously around the riparian rights, but we're, we're going through an RMA change process. Would that have any bearing on the decision or, or on that determination if we had a change in the RMA?
Uh, the answer is maybe. Um, till we see the upshot of those amendments. Um, can't really form a considered view on it. And I guess the high court judge or alternatively an independent uh expert property lawyer or the such uh would have to rule on the law as it applies at the time um and the facts that are presented to them.
So if, if we were to go down that track, would it be best to wait till the RMA had had, had been uh changed or all those changes were, were certain?
Uh, I'd have to do some research into that to see if it would be worth hitting pause just on account of the proposals. Um, and I'd hate to uh give you an answer now with, with that consideration, given the importance to the project.
Yeah, thank you. Um, councillor Baker.
Gordon, thank you for the report. I'm not sure who this, who's appropriate to answer the question, but this phase of Te Ongongaki Ta'wenu is a stage of a much larger piece of work. How much, and with stage one already been complete, how much of a a non-event opportunity loss, waste of money perhaps, does this impact on stage one? On the overall project, let alone what we've already done with stage one and subsequently committed to?
Uh, in regards to stage one, um, there were obviously decent benefits in stage two being completed. But stage one still provides an important connection between Tunks Reserve and Elizabeth Street. Um, what will become the stairway at the back of Ninety Denport Road? And then obviously the connection through to the Matapehi Rail Bridge. So um, uh, I think there's still quite a lot of value in what we've delivered in regards to stage one. Uh, we just don't get to um experience all of the value if, if we stop stage two.
Uh, what are we, what are we actually talking about this walkway? Is this a, a, a boardwalk? Is it a concrete path? What's, what's the sort of uh thoughts around, around what this actually, what this actually is?
Kind of variety of um typologies to deliver across, uh, to be responsive to the, to the environment. So when you're at First Avenue, the property interface is lower. Um, and there's also need for vehicular access to those properties. Um, and then as you move through the escarpment, the properties, the dwellings themselves are further up the slope and we can move to structure along that area. And then as we uh move to the southern end is, was sort of put forward and at the twenty-first of August meeting was um looking at um a more low-lying structure and integrating with some beach replenishment options as well. So it's, it's not one typology, it's not a Waikaroe-Estree um uh solution. It is a project that's responsive to each of the interfaces that it um encounters. So that, as we presented it, it was presented as three sort of main components or phases.
Councillor Baker.
Gordon, just adding to that, would those three phases be entirely accessible for those with physical impairments?
Yes, um, yep, that's certainly all the way through from um one end to the other. The only inaccessible component was getting up, yeah.
Uh, councillor Coret.
Uh, the two, that, one of the ministers this morning indicated that it wouldn't be accessible um throughout all the tides. And then uh with the high tide, you might not be able to do the continuous walk to Memorial Park. Is that correct?
Yes, there was options within that to look at the riparian um exit, the exit, managing riparian rights. And that was how we were looking to try and um ensure that we're not building a structure that sits above the adjoining property. So that, this primarily relates to the southern end. If you look up on this, on the screen between effectively Fifth Avenue East through to Se- Seventh Ave. Um, but most, there's a connection between Sixth and Seventh already on shore on a, on a Estland Reserve. Between um Sixth Avenue, Fifth and just north of that, there are low-lying properties who um if we were to build a resilient structure, i.e. sea level rise or the like, then we would be building above the adjoining land. So the agreement right at the get-go of this project has been to build um at an adjoining um equivalent level to the properties and then addressing a beach replenishment option. So um ideally, we'd like to get that running through at all tide access. There may be king tides where the pass is inundated um or a storm surge or the like, yes.
The extraordinary event that would restrict uh twenty-four seven access through there.
Correct.
Uh, councillor Taylor.
This could be a massive thing to answer, but I'd, I'd just something concise. We talked about protection that's already existing for some of these houses and um I presume because they've been done piecemeal, there's no consistency through that. Like, what does the future look like for those structures and um fixing them up for um climate change, I suppose, and, and the increased risk that we have coming up?
I think there's, there's two issues. One of them is the existing protection that's there. And um as part of the project, we'd have to look at the condition of those and you know, what is, what is the impact of putting structures in front of them? That would be a consideration. But the second, which is a bit more complex, is that those properties have um for slope stability reasons have um hazard zones identified. And there may be a future situation where someone is looking to intensify or redevelop the site and need to get in and do new protection work. So there are sort of two aspects to that. Um, it, it may come down to, there might be times when the walkway isn't accessible because of works that need to be done. Um, there may be instances where parts of the structure might have to be removed and replaced. And, you know, we, when we reported to the um previously on it, that was, that was clear that, you know, those were issues. Um, but it is, i- i- in the end, it's um is uncertainties on those, on what those property, the future development of those properties might look like. They are zoned for intensification, so um it would be a reasonable expectation that at some point someone will want to exercise those rights. And if they come close to the bank, there may need to be, you know, more protection works undertaken. So I think, yeah, I think the issue would be more that from time to time, there might be a lack of access along that waterfront to accommodate that. I mean, there's also the potential for landslide to impact as well, and that they're identified for, for that reason. Um, another complexity, just to be aware of, is that to a point, these works will provide some erosion protection. Um, but that's not, that, that's not something that can be relied on because the council's not undertaking these works for hazard mitigation reasons. Um, so you almost have to leave that out of the equation when it comes to looking at Geotech assessments. So that, that is a really complex part of this project. But I think when we get to the, you know, if we get, reach the point where we're doing final design, you know, it's, we'd definitely need some careful engineering assessment. I mean, if there were works that were, you know, close to needing reinstatement or maintenance, I think would be important to identify those.
Um, so probably a question for our general counsel, Andrew. Um, wha- what is a determination and, and what is, what is the process um, you know, to, to go through this?
So there's two avenues you could go down. One is a formal court process where uh a party makes what's called an originating application. And that essentially puts forward a set of agreed facts and circumstances in front of a high court judge and asks for a determination as to the competing rights and, and so forth. That process that I alluded to earlier, you're looking at at least six months to a year to achieve that. Um, and then you've got the consideration of an appeal, uh, almost certainly, given the contentious nature of um these issues, which would add a further year to the um, to the overall process. So that's the high court route. Uh, the other alternative would be if the parties to the dispute could reach an agreement that it would be submitted to an independent expert. Um, in this situation, you might select a highly regarded property lawyer that doesn't have any ties to either side. Uh, in, in a similar fashion, they'd be provided with an agreed set of facts and submissions and perhaps um oral presentations from either side. And then that independent expert would reach a view. Um, the benefit of that alternative option is it would be about half the cost of court proceedings. And you could uh potentially factor into the equation an agreement from both sides that the outcome is binding. So you remove that specter of an appeal process. So that's it in a nutshell in terms of the, the procedures uh available.
Okay, thank you um very much. That's, that's really useful. Um, I had another question around the um uh nine hundred and uh sixty-four thousand. So that is predominantly to get to this sort of design where we are now?
Is correct, yep.
And then in option two, uh, we've got another um seven hundred and seventeen thousand approximately. So what split, because we've heard that we have to, we have to get to a concept design um before we go to the legal process. So what, what sort of split is that between finishing the design and um the legal process?
Uh, we were pretty close to finishing the design. I think you've heard Rebecca say on that project timeline, we're pretty much seventy percent.
I think you've heard Rebecca say on that project timeline, we're pretty much seventy percent there. So the um balance of that was, majority of that was to go through the legal process.
Counselor Kurak.
So thinking about um the judge hearing uh the case and the arguments and looking at the issue of um the riparian rights. The design obviously would help mitigate the um concerns of those residents in terms of assuring access to the water. Um but then if you, the judge would want to be fairly certain in terms of the deliverability of um those medication measures and that. And so would therefore would need a, a consent um to prove that that's deliverable before that judge makes a final determination. So we'd have to go through quite a process, you know, full design and, and consent or the consentability of that, of the proposal before taking it to the court.
Uh councillor, well, it's not strictly speaking a prerequisite, but you're right. It would be another nail in the coffin to give certainty to the issue uh and to perhaps reassure the judge that um that outcome is viable.
Yeah, councillor Sch- Schola.
Yeah, I'm just, um and we know the um ocean path at the Mount probably never anticipated how many people would use it. Um though we did look and we're talking sort of ten million for that for sort of four or five kilometres, not twenty-eight million. But have the designs, have we looked at the likely number of people that would be using such a path?
Yeah, Marine Parade was um six, fourteen. Um different, um completely different environment, completely different kind of circumstance, yeah.
Just in terms of the number of people that would, would potentially use, because I've, I've been a user of Memorial Park for probably forty years and not that many people go out onto the water um at Memorial Park or at um First Ave. So did you have an estimate of, of how many people might use such a path?
Wasn't, wasn't certainly provided when we were briefed. However, um it's as an outcome of intensification for the city. So um in terms of making projections, um it would be based on the pop, future population that would be also um planned for within the city's, city's um Tapapa Peninsula.
Uh councillor Schola.
Just maybe a um terrification, maybe I missed it before, from councillor Kurak and the mayor's um questioning to legal. But the, the, the original initial um process to get that substantive judgment, what sort of you said the timeframe, what sort of dollar um quantum would we, would we be, could we expect?
I haven't been briefed on the makeup of that um figure referred to in the paper. But speaking to um our external lawyers today, the ballpark was one hundred and fifty thousand to two hundred thousand for that uh declaratory judgments process. And as I said earlier, about half if you went a, a private route.
So then the seven hundred and seventeen thousand, where, where's, what, what else is that?
Uh it's to cover off the design we're required to be able to make that, close out the design we're required to make that legal determination. And then that first stage of the legal determination, which was based on cost estimates that we had of around that similar sort of mark that was just referenced before. Um plus there's an element of contingency built into that as well.
So I guess, yeah, when, when you answered the question before, it sounded like that most of that was legal, but actually most of that is the design.
Uh yeah. Be, most of that would be towards the legal process. So it'll probably be close to, it's a fifty-fifty split, I would have thought.
Okay, um so seven hundred and seventeen, we've just heard, let's call it two hundred, that's five hundred and seventeen. And that is mainly legal, but we've already paid our legal or um.
But the initial, so the initial budget that was approved um didn't have any allowance in it to do. So the initial budget back in August twenty-three that was approved didn't have any allowance in it to undertake the illegal determination. So this budget then covers our costs to complete the design that's required and then go forward and get that legal determination plus some contingency on top.
So the predominantly out of that seven hundred and seventeen thousand in option two is for the design, not the legal?
Yeah, I can give you a more detailed breakdown if you'd like. I just don't have the figures at hand.
Yeah, no, that's fine. That would be, that'd be really useful. Thank you. Um so I'm just, just trying to understand, you know, if, if we approve this and, and we got a determination. Um you know, let's assume that, that we can go ahead and, and do this. So let's say we don't do this for five years. What's the, you know, are, are we able to rely on that determination in five years' time? Or, or are we going to have to go back and get another determination?
Provided the issues are still within scope of that original determination, I don't see a reason why you couldn't rely on it. But if it broadens and other property owners become embroiled, then that's when you might need to look at um a further process.
Uh councillor Kurak.
So sorry, I answered my earlier question about the, the resource consent. If the judge did go back and say, well, before I hear this case, I want to be some, some certainty around deliverability. Um and saying, well, I want to see a resource consent approved for that. Um what sort of um uh expense and time and likelihood of achieving resource consent, given um the objections you'd get to it, just a bit around that, just thinking of.
I'm not really in a position to give you a considered answer on that. I'd have to make some inquiries. It's a little outside my wheelhouse at the moment, but certainly.
Thank you. Um CJ, I'm.
I was just gonna say, just in terms of the timelines that you're talking about, it may well be that you have a new RMA in place at that time, which is something that the mayor refers to before. So we don't actually know what the list of framework is that um you'd be applying for a consent under.
A, if, if not too much change on the current environment, be a major?
Um it, it would still be quite a comprehensive exercise to do it, yes. Um and, and the other thing is that the um national policy statements are highly relevant to this uh as well. And they're all under review and being changed as well. And that's all linked to um RMA two um reforms. So there's no static position, particularly given the timeframes that you're looking at.
On that, um the new government direction, what's the likely timeframe of um going through that process and the new regime being locked in?
Um so the government put an announcement out, I think, hmm, two, two weeks ago. It's in their next package of work programme that they're looking at over the next sort of um three to six months of their announcement on um RM three, RM two, as you know, you've, we've submitted on and that is underway. But that doesn't significantly change the decision. It's the Resource Management Three, which is a total review. Um and that's, as I say, they've just announced that's in their three to six month work programme.
They'd want an outcome before the next election.
I think the minister's made that public. That, that's his intention, yeah.
Uh Schola.
That's a question for me, thanks. Um Chair, just maybe to you, Gareth. I understand you've had a few discussions in the past um with the Lake Landers. And probably a question I should have asked at the public forum around the, the, the collective. I mean, if this is done well, um if you look at what's there to potentially connect and, you know, revitalise the city and connect the downtown strand to Memorial Park, the concepts on the, in the, in the, to me, you know, look um look awesome, but obviously fully respecting the, the, the landowners. If this was done well, uh you know, is there, are your, the discussions a, a way that it, it could work to benefit property owners and enhance their properties as well as create that connection within the city? Broad question that I should have asked the public.
Um I mean, I can't speak on behalf of the landowners, but um over a period of, I want to say nine months, you know, we, we did spend quite a lot of time chatting. And I would just say that there's um views at every end of the scale, anywhere in between. There are some people that are enthusiastically supportive. And then there's some people at the other end of the scale that would, would like to die in a ditch over it, and then everyone in between. Um but the other thing I'd say is that the, the Boffa team and have been very, very cognizant of that feedback in terms of the design that they've come up with. So um for a particular property owner or two or three of them in an area, the issue might have been safety and security. And so therefore the design has very deliberately looked to try and reflect their concerns in the design of that part of the, the complete linear walkway. Um so, yeah, it's, it's a hard one to answer. I mean, the landowners will, will give you that, that feedback. But my experience of spending time with some of them was there was just a scale from one end to the other and, and everyone in between. Um but the team have been very cognizant of that in terms of what they've tried to put on a pa- piece of paper that would um deliver the best possible outcome for everyone.
Through you, worship, can I, can I just ask if we could um go back to uh Craig just to have a response to that RMA versus the legal? If, if that's okay with you?
Just a, a comment about the, the resource consent. And just to, to say that the thinking of the team at this point was that the property rights issues would be dealt with first before you embarked on the resource management process. Because the property rights issues are particularly about access. It's not the broad issues around construction effects, noise, there's a whole ra- range of quite, you know, long and costly work that we wanted to defer until we had certainty around the property rights issues. That was the thinking, whether that's the, how it proceeds, but that was, that's how we thought about it.
Counselor Kurak.
But the likelihood of getting a, a yes, you can build it, will be still uh subject to being able to deliver continued access to fulfil the riparian right issue. And the only way to do that would be to have a resource consent, yes, or am I up the creek somewhere?
Yeah, clearly you'll need a resource consent to build it, uh no doubt. But yeah, we, it was, it was trying to um resolve that critical risk to do with property rights first. And before we got everyone, including property owners, involved in a long and potentially expensive process. We wanted to gain way more certainty on that issue before moving to that next step. That's, that's where at. Uh so that's, that, that was the approach that we, uh we considered. Uh and we put those recommendations, yeah.
Counselor Crowe.
I, you know, I might be missing, missing the point, so just tell me if I am. But I, I, I thought the idea was to try to mesh together the resource consent solution with the property rights. But it sounds like we're saying we as council don't think the riparian rights hold. But I'm just, can you sort of flesh that out? Like, I, I mean, that's what it sounds like. Because as, as councillor Kurak says, we would obviously have to not encroach on their riparian rights if they have them riparian rights unless we think those riparian rights don't hold up by law.
Good everyone. Um my understanding is that the riparian is, issue is probably the higher hurdle to climb. And that's where the uncertainty, um not uncertainty, but the matter to resolve sits before the resource consenting. Um yeah, that is, that's my thoughts. And the resource consenting is a separate issue. There's been questions around timing and the changes. We can't really answer that. A high-level comment would be that they do appear more permissive, the changes. Um but we can't go any further than, than that understanding until we hear more.
Yes, I'm just trying to get to the core thing, which is, are we saying that the riparian rights that those property owners hold are not genuine riparian rights? So I'm, I'm just trying to really understand.
I don't think we're saying that. Um I do have to be cautious because there are varying views on that particular topic. And that's the um reason for the determination or the court process. I will say that the um, you know, I, I don't want to say too much, but there is a way. Maybe I'll start by explaining riparian rights. So riparian rights is a property owner's right to access the coastal area. Um so if you own a beachside property and you launch your boat to the beach, that's your riparian right. Um if someone put like a fence which stopped your boat from going onto the beach, that would breach your riparian right. Another example would be your house, your property to drive your car, you have to be able to go over footpath. If someone did a footpath that blocked your access from your car, that would breach your rights. So the, the key reason why the designing is important is it has to be designed in a way where it doesn't stop people from being able to exercise those rights.
To go back to my first question is, are the two of them linked together? Because we know they've got riparian rights. The question is, will the design? That's what I'm trying to get at. Like, don't we need to know what the designer is? And therefore find out if we can get a consent to actually to, to know whether the consent will, will be granted for that particular design, which puts us in a big circular situ- situation.
I, I'll, I'll attempt to answer certainly from the design process perspective, but also how we've been working our way, as Craig alluded to before, addressed before, which was um we've undertaken preliminary resource consent assessment work um with the experts to say and, and determine whether a resource consent is achievable. And it has been advised that it had, it is achievable to a che- to get a resource consent. However, the biggest hurdle, as um Hemi has pointed out and others, is that the riparian rights matter have two different opinions at the table at the moment. One saying that the, the, the connection will impede um and eliminate a riparian right. And another saying we can design um and integrate um a riparian right activity into that and still enable that. So the, the process, the design process to take to a High Court determination or, or other process would be a developed design for each of those properties to, for the, the determinator, the, the judge or, or otherwise a property expert to um look at and review and ensure. So it would be linked to the design. It, and that design, in order for us to go to the High Court process, would have confidence, but not we, we haven't planned for it to have a resource consent in hand going to that High Court process. We have planned with some confidence that we can get cons- resource consent for it, if that makes sense.
All right. Thank you uh very much to, to all the staff and, and to our external presenters for, for coming in and, and presenting to us and also deliver, uh answering all our questions. Um it's, it's really appreciated. Um before, because uh this motion has a number of, of options. Um I'd just like to um open up uh to councillors for a little bit of discussion. Uh so we can uh maybe get a, a bit of a, a gauge as to, to where we're going on, on this one um before we, we move a motion. Uh has anyone uh got any comments or? Counselor Schola.
They asked a lot of questions. I might as well say something. Uh yeah, cutting to the chase, I'd be in support of option two. I think um, I, I, yeah, obviously the sensitivity and, and with private owners, with riparian rights. I think we've heard very clearly from everyone, the challenges that are in front of us and the risks. But in terms of um what is designed for the vision and the future of the city, connecting um the strand and work that's already started there with um what will also be another key part of the development of Tapapa Peninsula, the, the Memorial Park concept. Um for us to get certainty around the way forward, I think option two is the only way we can, is, is the best way to progress. Thank you.
Counselor Tyler.
Um I think we had the same discussion when we're talking about museum and um the amount of time this has been brought to council, been backed out, brought to council, been backed out. Um I think we've, we've got to give some certainty to the residents, if no one else, that they um can put this behind them. So if council loses and the residents win, well then it's a done thing. They can get back to their lives. Uh they're living on a knife edge, um don't know what's happening. Um yeah, I, I think it's, we ought to them to actually push this out to the legal part and at least get that determined so we can work out what happens in the future.
Counselor Schola.
If I look at the risks that have been highlighted, um I risks that have been highlighted, um I and the, I guess there's some lack of clarity for me on the numbers of that we have budgeted to allow for both legal and further consulting. Um, if I look at some of the comments on the fact that any rule by a high court judge would need to rule on the law as it applied at the time. Um, we know that we've got um RMA could be make some changes. We've also heard that there could be national policy statements that are under review. Um, I yes, the certainty for residents is fine, but I'm not sure I'd call it knife edge because they're still enjoying their property. I think I don't want to put more costs on the rest of the people of Toronga. Um, I don't want to put good money after bad if we're just only going to get to a determination. And then the question of do we want to spend twenty eight million plus another six plus whatever extra comes in that when we actually haven't got that much budgeted anyway. So for me, there's too much uncertainty to commit to the next step, let alone because if we had the money in the bank or we thought it was a good idea to spend twenty eight million, which I'm struggling with, then maybe we need that certainty, but we haven't got that money in the bank and it's, we haven't decided that's where the next twenty eight million we've got is going to go. So I'm I'm definitely preferring option one. Um, I definitely don't want to take out um Cease because I think it would be a fantastic um addition to Toronga. Um, and I also just want to say I definitely don't want the nodes to be delivered. I think they are. I think the risks involved with them, um I'd see not enough benefit on that that amount of money and the risks involved, particularly if there's other properties that might be impacted. So um I am the cost um implication and the benefits for the um for the rest of Toronga are not uh good enough for me to um accept other than option one.
Counselor Roseburn.
Uh, thank you, Neil. Um, this morning when I arrived here, I was unsure which way I was going to go and after listening to all the robust discussion from the public, from the staff and better understanding the risks that we're going to be exposed to. I too am leaning towards option one as support. The project itself, I love the concept of it. It's a great idea, but at a time when we've made it quite clear to everyone that will listen, uh listen to us, we're looking for savings, efficiency and good use of um a rate per spending. I don't think this is the time for us to launch into this project right now, given the doubts around the RMA, national policy statements and a quite clear beating over the head from our prime minister about wasteful spending. Um, it is something that I'd be more than happy to look in years to come, but right now I'm not prepared to support this.
Counselor Morris.
Um, thanks, Neil. Yeah, I think if I say it now, it saves it later on, but subject to uh being educated by my colleagues. I think there's a logical flow to this. Uh, if the council is of an appetite that it wishes to pursue the project, uh then it will place thirty odd million dollars in that next long term plan. Uh, it is not in the current long term plan. Uh, I don't want to speak for anyone else around the table, but I don't detect a huge appetite to put it in the long term plan. Uh, for for my own um personal persuasion and you'll forgive me, but I think after having spent hundreds of millions of dollars on one point five square kilometres of the city, um, perhaps we could be fairer to other parts of the city in terms of uh spending money on walkways. So if there's no desire to put something in the budget, then that speaks to will. And if we're not going to go down that track, then by definition it is not necessary to explore this further. I get the argument around providing some certainty for residents. Um, riparians are an interesting issue and if you can design a structure in such a way that that right is not compromised, then I think the project would go ahead if there was budget for it, but there is no budget for it. So there's no budget for it, there's no will for it. And therefore, by definition, it's not necessary to proceed with the um uh declaration. So I think option one is the only logical uh decision before us.
Counsel Baker.
What a day. Uh, similar to to Martin this morning, I was on the fence between option one and two personally. Um, but after hearing the cordial today um from around this table, but also those that presented, I'm leaning a lot more into option one um for the reasons that have been mentioned by um Jen, Martin and and councillor Morris. Um, but this for me, sorry. Steve, I'll be consistent, Kilda. Um, but this actually raises to me an opportunity for us as council to dive a lot deeper into, I guess, not trying to sell council the dream as such, but tell a better story, because what I haven't seen and hear is the social return on investment opportunity with a project like this, let alone any project that doesn't have any financial return in mind. Um, and so I did some really, really crude math, and if you know me, I don't math very well. But here's my little attempt. Take it with a real grain of salt, but a little bit of, but there's still a bit of salt there. So really one dimensional view. I can see you laughing. Don't laugh. Okay. So an all day cost for parking is seven dollars, seventeen dollars fifty as of today. I'm getting in, yep, there's an agreement there, Kabua. If we look at Memorial Park, roughly, let's say there's a hundred car parks there, maybe, that are effectively free. And so if people, if there was that access way from Memorial Park to town, people that would park their pure vehicle alone would be saving collectively seven hundred and fifty dollars. Don't laugh at me. Um, which would be in a week, twelve thousand two hundred and fifty dollars, right? So if we put that into the sum that's in front of us of twenty eight million odd dollars, that would take us forty four years for a return on investment with that really crude math. I ignore full disclosure. That is not the best math and the best way to apply return on a social return on investment. But because we don't explore those pathways, it's hard to know if this is ultimately worth investing in, because there's a lot of great projects that we do that don't explain enough the return to community other than what we think it's going to return. Um, so a not a project like this would be a great opportunity to explore that. But my awesome, not so awesome maths alone says to me that it's not actually value for money at this point in time, so I would fall in favour for option one.
Um, I think we're probably, if if we could have a mover and seconder for option one, we may go into uh debate. It seems to be the the preferred. So uh moved by councillor Schola, um seconded by councillor Crowther. Uh, thank you. Um, so therefore we'll just put the uh motion on the table uh with option one.
Yep.
Check those out.
So I think we just, I think it's just that rescinds parts. Yeah. B, C and D, isn't it?
Yeah.
You leave that bed in, doesn't it, don't you? Because that's
So so I think I heard correctly, if you go for option one, apart from the previous, the twenty first of August um re- recommendation uh resolutions, you're deleting all, you're rescinding all other resolutions.
That's B, C and D. I think it's B, C and D though. You took out a C and I don't think it should. Rescinds part B, C and D.
That's B, C and D.
Yep. So we'll um, well, I think what we've heard to today is is around the the cost of delivering the project. But while we while we work on that um recommendation or or that resolution, um I'll ask councillor Schola if she has any further comments.
I just think this is a, we want to establish a way forward. We need to know that um that projects are delivering value for money and delivering for our people. I think this um irrespective of the potentially twenty million that's been spent to date, um which we are getting clarity on. Um, I think we we have to say what are the benefits going forward. Um, I support the other comments from my colleagues. Um, there is too much uncertainty. Um, we have got some terrific projects that we want to um look after. Um, and I think I also um acknowledge that we have put a lot of money into the city centre and um there's a much bigger um breadth to Toronga. So for me, this is saying, um, this is a new way forward. This is something we need to be able to say, yes, it's a um, it's the right decision for for us to take forward and I um concur with the um the comments that there isn't a budget to do twenty eight million dollars worth. So there's no point being, knowing whether we can spend that money or not. So um hence I support the motion.
But Crowther.
Yeah, thank you. Um, yeah, I I was probably similar to some other councillors, just wanted to hear the discussion around options one and two. I think there are merits of of both. Um, I I think in terms of the big picture, I used to, when I first heard of this project, it was, you know, a community initiated idea from what I understand way back and that people kept getting behind it. It sounded really cool. The more I've looked at it, the more I've looked at the costs, the escalation of costs, you know, it relates to the just to the physical sort of issues around building along there. And I think it's it's an incredibly challenging project, it's incredibly risky. And so, you know, when I look at what it will end up costing, you know, around the, you know, fifty odd mil if you have the nodes as well. And I I look at, that would be the TCC share for the Otamotei cycleway, which I think is ridiculously expensive anyway, but um but, you know, when I look at what that would do for our community, for our city, and I'm not pushing Otamotei, it's just that's the one that we've got a cost for. Um, you would service three shopping centres, three schools, a whole lot of preschools. You know, you you'd be literally providing something for hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of people every day who are who are really at safety risk. But there are deaths and serious injuries um in that area. And so you would be saving lives potentially. This one, I think it is in the category of a nice to have because we've heard from the team and a crucial part for me is that it was initiated by the community with a significant transport component and was even talked about at at one time as having an NZTA subsidy. Now we've heard it's not a transport issue, it's it's a recreational facility. So as much as we might all like the concept, I just think we have to sort of look at the reality. In terms of the nodes, I, you know, I'm quite big on supporting universal design. And I don't think there's a demand from the public to go down a steep slope at second half or fourth half when they can actually just walk, bike or drive down to sixth half. And we don't have to actually build anything at sixth half to access the beach. So then you sort of, really what you're left with is spending whatever it was, six or seven mil on accessing fifth half, really to me is what I would sort of see as the as the drawcard there. And I think that's an awful lot of money for something like that. So I I definitely can't support the nodes and think we're better not to spend the money, as councillor Morris said, if we don't have an intention of spending. You know, ultimately, probably fifty mil will be my guess.
Correct. Yes, I do. Um, support the the project. But in in the day, I do support the the resolution because we can't afford it. So why plan for something that you can't afford? And that's a logical decision for me. We've got a ten year plan that's woefully unaffordable when we need to start addressing it. Don't address it by adding more to it. End of story.
Counselor Taylor.
Uh, I might be supportive of the motion because I did think there was some um real validity in getting some kind of a an end point for the residents especially. Um, the other thing that I'd also bring up, and we discussed it briefly during our discussion and question time, um, is the potential for health and safety issues with those nodes. I think um we probably need to have a bit more information on what that looks like. Uh, and the potential for us to be um open to issues with those areas that uh may collapse or um have have poor access at the moment. So I don't think the story on spending money on the nodes has gone away yet. And I'd like it uh looked at a bit more closely from that angle. Thank you.
Yeah, so I I guess um it's been great to to hear the discussion around the table and and you know, I was I was probably leaning towards option two before we we came in here today. Uh, and reason being is, as we've heard today, this has been around for twenty years. We've been discussing it. And I guess for for me, I, you know, would like to put that to bed. Um, you know, either way, uh this is something we can continue to discuss um and and go ahead um or or stop it. I guess in in hearing some of the discussion today, especially, I think councillor Morris made a really good point. Um, a- around the budget. If if we're going to get that certainty, we we need some certainty that we need, we're actually going to continue. Um, and for eight hundred metres of of track for twenty eight million dollars, I I don't believe it. It creates really good value for money. Uh, we've heard that the Marine Parade, um, you know, cost around six. Well, if you if you spend that twenty eight million there, you know, that that potentially limits your opportunity to take the Marine Parade path and take it down to Papa Ma or um as as Glenn mentioned, um, you know, the Otamoto path. And so I think I think we need to to be cognizant of of if we spend that money, that's an opportunity cost somewhere else. Uh, and and potentially we can deliver that value for money. In saying that, I absolutely support this project. I'd love to see that walkway added. I think it would would create a a really good, um, you know, value for money. Uh, sorry, not value for money, but um a really good uh amenity for for the city. Um, but it doesn't deliver that value for money at at the moment uh with with what is planned. So until we're prepared to deliver it, um, you know, I I think this is now um buried for now. Um, but as we heard in in the public forum, um it it may raise uh rise the phoenix from the ashes in future. Um, you know, but I think the appropriate time is is when we are prepared to commit that that money to to doing it. And and for me, I'm going to support option one just because I, you know, I I think it's uh right that we uh suspend it um until such time that we're prepared to spend that money to to deliver it. Um, and then we can go down the the process. So um, you know, it is, it is buried for now, but it's uh, it's not dead. So um, that's that's uh probably uh where I'd I'd put it. And if we can uh show that value for money in future, um, I'd be willing to reconsider it.
Any further discussion? Counselor Shula.
I'd be to speak as well. Uh, I I like the other councillors, I didn't come here with a firm view in mind and um and listening to what was said is where I um settled on too. I suppose it was around the waiting for me on the connection and the plan for um the enhancement of the city. Fully, fully respect and understand um other councillors' views around um the cost and other ways we can spend money and have value for money. So um fully understand that and respect that. I I do still wonder, you know, for me, what does suspend mean? We all say we're keen on it, we like the idea, like the concept, but um is is that really the separation between um it's not there right now, we don't have a will. So I I would maybe disagree with councillor Morris that maybe there is a will, but it might be a bit fanciful in uh where we see it at the moment. Um, so yeah, I will, I will make my vote. Um, I it looks like I'm very much in the minority um of this group, but I mean, that's what this process is about. I think it's been a really good, robust discussion. Um, and good views have come in front of the table. Um, yeah, I'm just concerned about what suspends mean because knowing for a hundred and fifty to two hundred thousand, maybe three hundred thousand dollars, um, that we could get to know what the future could look like if such a time came. Um, and if we don't do that now, then And if we don't do that now, then when we decided to unsuspend it and then spent two or three years finding out, another whole council term goes and you're still in years of uncertainty. So my only view is really creating that certainty now. And it's not a big spin for us to know, to set us up for the future if times change, councillor. So I'll put that with you to think before you vote. Thank you.
All right. I think that's everything. We're just going to put some, just some reasoning for the decision. Just be good to see whether this just read, if we just read this through and just see whether we're comfortable. Just read, if we just read this through and just see whether we're comfortable. I think we're just, and at twenty eight point two million estimated. And that reasons for decision, sorry. Yeah, nice to have, and. Yeah, estimated costs and so at twenty eight point two. Yeah, nice to have and. Yep. Estimated. Cost. Yeah, I think estimated cost. Like a value.
Maybe just not good value for money.
Yeah.
Provide good value for money, full stop. No, just, no. Just good value for money, full stop, and then take out.
All right, so if we look at that full resolution now.
And C, and C, just remove the meeting, you've got it in there twice, made at the council meeting of twenty one August twenty three meeting.
So just that final meeting. Then the bracket before parts. All right. If we, if we look at that resolution, we've all had an opportunity to talk to it. Councilor Schola, would you like to? Have any more further comments? Therefore, I put the motion to the council as up on the screen. And I ask all those in favour, raise your hands. So councillor Taylor and councillor Schola are against. And all those against.
Taylor and Schola.
Taylor and Schola against. That, no, he's, he was four. He was four, so every, that was. Therefore, that motion is carried, thank you. We move on to eleven point two. Twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six user fees and charges, policy alignment and changes. Thank you, all those that came to the meeting and listened in. I'd now like Paul, Catherine and Fraser Smith to come and. Come and present to us. And speak to the report on the, on the user fees.
With the chair, I think Fraser's deserted the team. So, but we've got Catherine and Sarah to talk to this report. So this is the annual user fees report. Bring up the suggested changes to the user fees as part of the upcoming annual plan, and I'll hand over to the team.
Right, so we've brought to you the draft user fees and charges schedule and proposal for consultation. They're presented today for council consideration and direction. And then we, once we get your feedback, we will bring an agreed schedule and proposal to the third of March meeting for adoption prior to consultation. So the schedule is one of your attachments, it's been track changed, so you can easily see the changes. The adjustments are based around a general inflation at around three percent, but everything is sort of brought to sort of sensible charging levels within that. And sometimes it's sort of a wider context, there might be additional charges coming in, so the activity manager will have considered those matters and. And setting out or proposing the fees. The revised charges, as they are, have been factored into the draft budgets. Which come through alongside, you know, updated volume assumptions as well, so they come into those user fee revenue figures. And we have not included the water volumetric charge or fixed charges at the stage, so that will come, it wasn't quite ready in time, so it will come to the third of March meeting. And there'll also be a couple of other user fee charge options coming to the third of March meeting, which is looking at other ways to fund the budget. So, as along with, in the attachment, along with the statement of. Of the user fees and charges schedule is a statement of proposal, so that goes out. With consultation and it's calling out new charges. Or kind of significant stories in there, so. There's an ongoing increase in building services charges, as it aims to move towards cost recovery. Cost related to cemeteries, development works, food premises and parking are all called out in that proposal. There's also an attachment that talks about for, for those activities that are required to gain enough user fees to. Fund your activities, how, how they're faring, so that was the very colourful attachment with the arrows. Identifying a couple of activities that are struggling to cover their costs as, as currently set out. And also activities such as building services which are on a phased program to get towards that cost recovery. So, happy to take any questions.
Thank you for that, have we got any questions? Councillor Crowther.
I've got a few. One, first one is, the lease parking revenue was under property management, now under parking. So property management's now got a projected one point four million loss. Parking's got a one point five surplus. So what does that exactly refer to? Is it the long term leases at Spring and Elizabeth Street? Is it broader than that? Does it include the, you know, I'm not sure what happened when we purchased and upgraded the Devonport car park and then the Dive Crease. You know, just what are we actually talking about there?
And so I, I think these are more minor charges because the parking buildings and those major car parks are included under the parking activity, so these will be other leases.
Can you give an example? I guess I'm not sure what we own that fits that description.
Well, I'm imagining it's to do with other properties we're leasing that have parking.
I'm pretty sure, but I think as a general answer, the difference that the one's gone up and one's gone down is the parking management account, and correct me if I'm wrong, is a through account. So whatever the lease, property leasing team collects goes to the activity. And I'd have to get some clarification about what other, other sites we have other than parking buildings, but Marty's pointing to somebody who might know the answer. Paul.
Yeah, yeah, just for, for clarity, the difference, Catherine was correct in that, and so is Barbara. That, that, the, the, the parking activity will hold the, the least income for our managed parking stock being buildings, the normal parking buildings. The property that manage the actual leases that may be incidental to a wider property will go through the property too. That's, that's the difference, that's. So, as Catherine says, it'll be the smaller amounts effectively, the large leased parking incomes, which are largely around Elizabeth and Spring Street parking buildings, will be going through the parking activity.
Example I can think of is that we do lease, I think, thirty car parks to a private business and the. The Wolf area that, and that would be an example of one of those, yeah.
The property management, that is just all the properties that council owns. You know, so what they've just done is they've transferred any parking out of that into the parking activity. So this is all the other buildings that we own and lease and manage.
I, I guess the key, maybe you could, I'll do an elected member request email, but, but I mean, I guess what I'm trying to get at is where does the asset sit on the books? Because if it's in the property area, then, you know, that makes sense if it's in the parking area, then, you know, it's a different. So to me, it should just go wherever the, there's a cost attributed to that. And so I guess just to provide clarity, but I can, I can email that. And shall I have another? You can tell me when to stop. So, so Bay Court, I guess there are a few questions linked to, well, Bay Court and the Historic Village, if I tie them together somehow. That on page fifteen, we haven't got a sixty percent discount for all the Bay Court venues. Not sure why, and then I'm not sure why the fifty percent off community rate for non-performance meetings, conference, private function, half day rate, sixty percent of full day rate. Why, why that is not just allocated down to, you know, you could, you could have fifty percent of the sixty percent for, for a half day or whatever. You know, it doesn't seem to be a consistency there, and then when you go to the Historic Village on page forty three, the. And this is a big issue in the community, I know, the, the cost of hiring the balcony room, the hall, the cinema. You know, why a twenty percent charity discount versus Bay Court having a fifty percent quote community discount? Again, it seems so inconsistent, I'm just wondering, is there an opportunity without upsetting the user fees apple cart this year? To try and align that, or are there good reasons for those to be like they are?
I think your question is very relevant, and I think, I know that the teams have tried to ensure that when there is a, a discount provided, that it's consistent. So you've obviously picked up one that's not, so I do think we can either make a change or a full review of the fees and, another full review of the fees and charges for the LTP year. I, I don't know why, I can't answer the question, is why Bay Court thinks it's less than, than the manager of the Historic Village, but I can come back with an answer on that one.
If I could just add, because it was remiss of me not to say in the introduction that. That we were proposing to do a more comprehensive review in a future annual plan or a long term plan for that very reason around consistency. So we can absolutely pick those things up, this was really looking at the immediate changes for the current, of the next financial year.
Questions around the cemetery, so I, I guess, again, you can either answer them here or just before next week, whatever's best, but we've got. Self bet full charge of two hundred and ninety three dollars, I've, I've actually had a summer job up there and I, I'm struggling to kind of. Understand what the additional cost is that would equate to that, and then you've got a public holiday surcharge. Which seems like you're allowing a lot of hours of extra work for two staff who are reasonably well paid at those rates. And again, based on personal experience, I'm just questioning those, and, and the same with the admin fee. For a funeral without a director, does it really require more than one staff person? So those are sort of the same theme, and I guess if you have answers, you can just provide us, that's fine, in writing, but the, I guess the crux of it is. Are we really, really confident that these are actual costs and have not been sort of, you know, rounded up to cover contingencies or unexpected things?
There's a few questions in there, I can answer some of them, but I can certainly provide some more information. Public holidays, even if it is two staff, you have to pay time and half, you have to pay annually, so there is extra cost than the standard hourly rate on a, on a public holiday. The backfilling is a, is a charge, yes, that's when people want to partly cover in the grave site. That requires as many staff to ensure that health and safety is covered and nobody, you know, hurts themselves. So there is still a lot of staff that are there, and then we always need to actually finish that job. I think one of the other questions I heard was about hiring of devices. That's the, the lowering device that some, some funeral directors have, some don't. So we provide that to funeral directors that don't, or private, private burials that don't have that, that device, and we would always be there to supervise. But, but there is some more detail, I think, in your question that relates to hourly rates and how that, how we equate them out, and. We do normally take some timing, we, we survey how long things take and work out with our charge out rate, what we should be charging for different aspects of service delivery. But we also measure it to what, what our peers are charged, what our metro, other metro councils or our other councils around us charge, so that we're in line when we don't lose business.
I just had a question on the same topic, in the administration fees, and, and we're proposing to introduce a new two hundred and fifty dollar fee for administration of seat donations. I'm just, just trying to understand.
Yes, certainly, I, I don't think it's worded very well, the people donate the seat. So somebody comes and wants to donate a seat to, to the cemetery and have a plaque on it for, to remember a, a loved one. So that the administration fee is really around handling that, organising, making sure. The family usually see, you know, get the seat delivered, so we, we need to do all the administration around actually citing the, the seat. So that's to cover that admin that supports the donation of a seat.
So we don't charge, we don't say if you want a seat, it's two thousand dollars, and, and they, they actually physically source a seat and send it to us?
That is an option, but normally they source the seat and send it to us. If somebody wants us to direct them into a place where they can buy a seat or us facilitate the actual purchase of the seat, it would be at cost.
Any other questions? Yeah, councillor Morris.
I think it may have already been covered, but are there any other user fees or. Use fees changes above inflation that haven't been identified in the report already? Because I noticed some of the big moves were in there, but are there any above inflation changes that haven't been identified?
No, none, none that haven't been identified already in the statement of proposal or the fees and charges schedule.
Through the chair, if I can just add, airport parking will come to the third of March, so there will be some further changes there.
So, Schola.
Thank you, and I don't, I haven't been able to find where it is. So there was just a comment about the increasing the parking costs at Dive Crescent and one other, and I just. Wasn't, I know we're doing a parking strategy and looking at all parking, and one of my colleagues earlier today talked about, wouldn't it be nice to have a standard. Cost of car parks across Toronga, which I think is a great idea. So I just wondered why this, and I, it says that it was, it's really, people, it's, it's used really well, people will put the price up, which to me isn't. The right argument, so how, how much consistency have we got around parking and is it possible to have some consistency for parking?
So we can bring that to you in the, in the parking strategy review and just provide a table, so, oh, please no.
Hello, Tata. Yeah, it's going. Very loud. Yeah, that suggestion is, is based on supply and demand, basically, it's, it's what the market is telling us, we're getting very. Very high utilization and it tells us that we can charge a little bit more for it, maybe not as much as we would ideally like, because then that pushes out. That parking to walk into the job situation, so it actually needs to be considered all in conjunction with the parking paper that you will consider later on in the month. But the, the reason for that is basically a supply and demand, we have on some days a hundred percent occupancy. And we, we could charge more for it, so it could be a revenue stream.
But if you did charge more, if it in a year's time was no longer at a hundred percent some days, would you put the price down?
By the way, the, the city is growing, I think that, that would be, would be quite unlikely, but it is a supply and demand, and we are looking for. That, the sweet spot for us is to find an eighty five percent occupancy rate, whether it's buildings or the, the, the off-street parking generally. We need the turnover, we need it to be attractive, we need it to be not so expensive that it puts people off. So it's, it's a matter of finding that balance of good occupancy rate.
Uh, so it's a, it's a matter of finding that balance of good occupancy rate, um, while we generate the income that we need from it, because it is a cost to council.
Am I correct? We've got three, is it eight dollars, twelve fifty and seventeen fifty? Is that the three different rates?
Another one. Again, Cliff Road, six fifty.
Yeah, I think, yeah, I I think just to Jen's point, I I agree that s- different areas may be slightly different prices, but having four different prices within the city and, you know, like, trying to judge as to where, you know, uh, it just sort of probably is luck as to where you work. If you work closer to Dive Crescent than you do to, you know, the the centre of town, um, obviously understanding that the car parking buildings um do have, you know, it should be at a premium, um, because you're you're parking undercover, et cetera, but um, I do think we need some some more consistency there and and but I do also agree with uh changing it to, um, you know, that that you do move with with uh supply and demand. Councillor Skola?
Um, thank you, Chair. So just, um, we've had conversations previously just in terms of the cost of administering um user fees, and I think it's something I'm grappling with. Um, if we're actually charging user fees, but actually it costs as much to administer those, um, is it the right thing to be doing? Or should we just be trying to reduce costs for both the people and for council? Um, but just on, when we are looking at these, at user fees, can we always try to estimate the cost of administering um user fees as well, just so that we do know, um, is this a revenue stream or is it actually a a cost? And I think, um, it was great to hear that percentage of looking at eighty-five percent occupancy, um, nitpits like those are the those are really good principles for us to know. And, um, again, I'm borrowing from another um of my colleagues, um, just we we do want on user fees to be able to say that the revenue is intended to cover X amount of the cost of these activities. Um, thanks, um, councillor Shula. Um, and it's just those those sort of principles make it a lot easier for us to understand how we should be um promoting user fees, which I think we we all want to have, but we also need to recognise that they, every time you put one in, there's an O P E X cost that we need to acknowledge is there. And sometimes we might say it's not worth having people managing it because it actually runs at a loss, and therefore we can reduce O P E X and reduce the cost to people of Toronga.
Mr. Crowther?
The pools, I'm just wondering if you can explain why Bay Venues is not charging what looks from the paper, you know, from the um list of user fees, the charges that were agreed by council. And so there's a note to that effect somewhere in the in the in the item, and because, and for example, you know, it's a small thing, but I'm just, I I can't quite understand why it's currently six ninety. It's supposed to be seven dollars, and we're proposing to put it seven ten for an adult, you know, at some of the pools. Other pools, it's completely different amounts, um, in terms of the ratio for, say, Bay Wave, which is more expensive. The ratios are different for children, the ratios are different for seniors, it's just all over the place. But I'm just wondering, is there, is there a reason for the discrepancy between what was intended and what's actually happening in reality?
So so I mean, those um decis- the decisions on charging are made by Bay Venues, and they have their own website. So it was just for completion, we um have always put sort of a snapshot or an indication of charges into the user fees and charges report, but there are quite a a few sort of um details that we don't just for for um be able to manage the number of pages on Bay Venues, we don't put in. So I guess it's a question of whether it's, you're finding it helpful or um is it raising more questions?
But I I suppose this is not a question, but to answer the question, um, for me, it would be, I mean, I don't want to meddle with every little charge, but I think it would be nice for us at some point, sooner rather than later, to instruct Bay Venues to actually have a set of principles behind their charging. So they have whatever it is, you know, kids' half-price or three-quarters price, but come up with a standard where they just then every year we can say we want to go with the rate of inflation or twenty percent increase or whatever we want to do. But it just becomes a push button to kind of go, they go up by a ratio and get rounded. Um, because at the moment, there's no consistency between, well, I mean, there's all sorts of issues such as Otamora Pool versus Gretin. And then you've got, of course, Bay Wave, Dera and and so on, but but for children or for seniors, it can be different ratios. So to me, it's just getting a consistency, and I think that's council's role. And then Bay Venues can kind of, um, you know, they they can provide input in terms of whether whether something's going to really cause them to lose a lot of revenue because we're trying to put the fees up too much or something.
Yeah, I think that's something we can probably look at down the track, but it's probably beyond the scope of of today. Um, but get the the point around consistency, but understanding that the offerings, I guess, are are different, it's sort of that supply and demand thing again. Um, so just, just, I guess, a a question, you know, environmental health and licensing, for example, you know, making a loss of one point six million, you know, what we're hearing is it's it's really hard to get um alcohol licensing fees. And and this, I'm not picking on just, I'm I'm using this as an example, but you know, across across the the city, you know, I I think we we really need to start looking at at some of these administration costs and and trying to um be efficient, um, and and try to to make, you know, these systems as as um as as simple as possible. So my question is, have have we reviewed some of these processes and said, you know, this is actually how we can make this more efficient? And what I'm thinking is, for example, you know, rather than applying for a liquor licence every year, you get given a five-year licence um with some strict um sort of criteria around if you don't meet the standards, you can, you can lose them. But rather than than every single year having to go through the administration and another one is is, you know, we're talking about licence to occupy, you know, can we give a ten-year lease, for example, um, you know, that rather than having to administer that every single year and go through that that process? Have we, have we gone through that process and thought about these things?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Yes, it's definitely something that we've thought about in terms of the alcohol licensing and all of those other uh processes where we need to recover costs. Some of the timeframes are bound by legislation, so the alcohol, the sale and supply of alcohol um act requires when new licences might be um issued and applied for. Uh, but as you know, we are at the moment consulting on introducing an alcohol fees bylaw uh to better cover the costs of the business. And part of that is staff having a really deep dive into what it actually takes from start to finish and how we can make that a lot simpler uh and a lot faster. One of the things we're looking at are our hearings for district licence committee meetings, uh, all in person. Um, we've been getting more and more, we're probably running to a week at the moment. And what can we do online? And what can we do on the papers? And that'll save a lot of cost.
Yeah, I I guess that direction is, you know, rather than let's just put the fees up, let's try to get the costs down, um, and then then potentially we can keep the fees, you know, at at similar levels. Um, any other, uh, councillor Kuro?
Um, just on attachment one, I have, I'm not able to open it in Stella, and also went to the T C C website to try and access it there, and it's um not up on the website either, because I assumed all those attachments would just roll on from them from their main report. And I also had a look at the report on the Ojendra and Public website, and that lacked attachment one as well.
It is on the um H T M L version, yes, I.
H H T M L?
Yeah, I think there has been a problem with it. We're just, it's just being rectified as we speak. Yep, yep.
And yeah, public website, this can be uploaded to that. Yep.
Any further questions on? Yeah, councillor Crowther?
I should have just emailed someone. Where is Humaru? It's it's after um the arena and Kiwi Two and before Aquinas, Maryvale. So it's on a list of facilities that council owns, and I'm, I don't know, actually, excuse my ignorance, but where it is.
I think that's the new court, Cameron Road, four eight three Cameron Road.
So, Shula?
Just a small thing, just on the symmetries, the the increase in the um holiday charges. So is that, just for clarity, that up until now, the extra um hourly rates in that haven't been charged, so that change is big to align?
Um, I'd have to double check, but I'm I'm confident, I'm confident that it's a change in fee, not a new fee.
Okay, thank you.
But I'll, but I'll make sure, and if I'm wrong, I'll let you know.
Any other questions? Um, okay, thank you very much, staff, for um attending to our questions. Um, if we could just get the recommendation up. We're just, uh, just having some technical problems. We'll just wait um until we can get that uh resolution up. Have we got, uh, councillors, have you um got that in front of you? If we have a mover and a seconder, we could, uh?
It's me, I'm happy to move.
Okay, councillor Roseboom has moved. I'll second that. Um, that's receiving the report, twenty, twenty-five, twenty-six user fees and charges. Oh, there we go. Um, so uh we we now have a motion on the table. Councillor Roseboom, would you like to talk to it?
That's just basically us receiving a report that's going to come to us next Monday to set what we consult on in the annual plan, so I'm happy to take it as read and move it to the annual plan.
Yep, I I agree with you. Uh, I think just again to um say that we we need as a as a council organisation to start looking at our efficiencies and and not just uh go to uh uh, sorry, not not just go to uh putting fees up, but actually saying, you know, is there opportunities here to to make this more efficient and get our costs down? Um, because that's, um, you know, that all all adds into to uh what we're trying to achieve here is is that value for money and uh, you know, providing good value for for all our businesses, et cetera, out there that uh quite often use some of these these fees. So I think, uh, you know, that's that's very much the direction uh that we we want to see. Is there any other discussion? Uh, councillor Crowther?
Um, I guess to provide some direction, I mean, for myself, I would hope that we could actually not make the parking scenario a bit more complex, and I think what we're proposing to do is going to do that. I think we're nearly spot on where I think we should be, which is two dollars an hour across all the parking. Um, off-street parking in the city and and the first two hours of on-street parking, also that price. It would be very, very simple to get to that point. What we're actually proposing to do is to change um a lease price which gets away, which is derived on a, you know, so many hours at the base rate. We're we're changing that away from that principle, we're changing the, um, we're making it even more complex in terms of Cliff Road now from six fifty to eight dollars, Dive Crescent from eight to ten, still got a couple at twelve fifty. To me, if you, as the mayor said, you know, if you're parking at Devonport Road or TV Three site or Dive Creas, to me, the argument should be, you know, why the difference? I know there's different cost structures built in for it for us, but that shouldn't be the issue that we're servicing people with similar level of service, and probably Cliff Road could be a bit cheaper, but but you do that by just sticking to that basic principle, which I know the commissioner's address, which was two bucks an hour. And you then tweak the long-term rates to so many hours maximum per day. So if it's, if you want to do it at seven hours or whatever, you you do it. But to me, we're we're looking at finessing this, responding to market and actually reducing one from, I think, two hundred and eighty to two seventy-six, which gets away from that basic principle. And I don't know if four bucks a month is going to make any differences. It'd be better to align this. And and I I I realise there are a bunch of other things that I've talked about, which probably won't be able to be addressed this year, but I think that's one we could actually nail in this annual plan. And it would make it much, much easier to communicate to the people of Toronga that if you want to come to the C B D, you've got heaps of options at two bucks an hour, no matter where you're parked, no matter how long.
Comes to that simplification, so I think, you know, I agree around just just having some some uh set rates, and rather than having five different rates, it's two or three maximum, you know, across the city, so. Any other discussion? Um, therefore, I'll I'll put the motion uh in, is on the screen. Uh, and I ask all those in favour, those against. Uh, that motion is carried. Thank you very much. Uh, we move on to um eleven point three, rating policy review, twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six uh annual plan. Um, I believe we've got uh Paul Davidson, Jim Taylor and Catherine Sharpland, who will um discuss this uh with us and take our questions.
Thank you, Mayor, just while Jim and Catherine are getting settled. Um, so the the rating review is um bringing to council effectively um two two fundamental things. The first being of the, the end of the definition of the industrial rating category. Um, and that was requested to look at that, can we actually refine that particular on the smaller properties? And then the second one is just um some minor, our potential minor amendments to the percentages of of rates that we're calculating, which in the long-term plan, we're transitioning to a a sixty-five, fifteen, twenty split. Um, but but um Jim can explain as to why we're we're suggesting that that could be be changed from that.
Porta Kato, um, Mayor Mahi and councillors, and good afternoon, I think it is afternoon now. So the purpose of this paper is to help you make a decision on the rating policy. And that decision will then determine the set the methodology for a pla- for applying the allocation of the general rate over all of the rating categories. Apologies in advance that the paper is a little bit of a difficult read, it is quite a technical paper, and we have tried to simplify it a bit, but what we'll do is we'll take you through the main themes and then open up for questions aft- after that. So in the previous two meetings that we've had about this rating policy, the councillors have given some direction that you believed that the new industrial rating category included smaller industrial rating units that you thought were more suitable in the commercial rating category. And um staff's view is that this can be achieved logically through uh a a step where smaller rating units with an area of two hundred and fifty square metres or less can be incorporated into the commercial rating category. And that this, that that option would not require continuous inspection, continuous monitoring and some subjective decision-making. So moving the small rating units into the commercial would have an impact on the balance of the remaining industrial rating units. So you could leave the allocation at at twenty percent uh as the decision in the long-term plan. However, that would mean another very large increase for the industrial rating units. So hotel and hotel, if you choose to maintain the level of the allocation for the industrial at nineteen, which it would be if you moved those seven hundred smaller ones out, then and also continued to move the commercial from thirteen point three up to fifteen, then the total combined commercial industrial would be about thirty-four percent. Residential would be sixty-six after the next two years, and that seems to be about the average for the other metros in New Zealand, and it was something that seemed to have some sort of support in the last two meetings. So the resolution in the paper, actually, that is the resolution that meets those those decisions that you might want to make. Of course, you can make any decision today, and that would be including continuing with the resolution that was in the long-term plan, leaving the differentials as they are currently or combining the industrial, commercial, recombining them. leaving the differentials as they are currently, or combining the industrial, commercial, recombining them into one. And you'll see that I've also included a, a table in, in section thirty of the paper to show you the impact of each of those choices on the median residential, commercial and industrial. Noting that the, you, you might see that the, the median is, is different from the total budget increase, so you probably already spotted that. The, the, the reason for that is that this is looking at the land rates bill only. The, the water rates bill is separate from the land rates bill. And the increase for the water rates is a bit less than the total twelve point five percent current budget amount that we're looking at. We've also included an impact if you chose to find another eight point three million through other decisions to bring the total budget down to ten percent, so you can see what the impact would be on the, the median residential, commercial, industrial customers there. Yeah, that's, that's about it for me, if that's, that's the paper in the, in the summary, if you've got any questions, I'm happy to take them now.
So, Morris.
Thank you, and thanks for the comprehensive paper. If councillor agrees with the recommendations, it appears to me in my reading of the numbers that the impact of removing the two hundred and fifty square metre area from the industrial category will in fact fall on the residential rate payer, given that moves to sixty-six percent and industrial reduces to nineteen. In order to reduce industrial rate rises, is that correct?
That would be correct. There, there has been quite a bit of movement after the revaluation as well. So we've got the revaluation objection process, which is now complete. And there were a number of the large industrial, the properties that were successful in their objections and the, the volume of capital values reduced in that area as well. So yet you're right, it does, in any scenario, there is a bit of an increase on the residential rate payer.
So, Taylor.
Jim, as the instigator of this idea, and I've probably gone further than I thought it would. In your experience, is this a sensible way of handling the objections we had from those small people that use storage facilities, like, that's uncomplicated? I'm just sort of trying to get your, your gist on if it's the right thing to do.
It's definitely a logical and policy, which would be really easy to administer, which is something that, that talks to what councillor Schola was saying earlier about the cost of administration. And, and this, this is a very simple methodology to choose if you change that policy. And if you believe that that met, and it was quite clear from the previous two meetings, that there was a bit of consensus in the room about that being a more fair and equitable rating policy. So yes, it would be simple to administer.
Do we have any sort of look-through as to, I think there's six hundred and forty-two potential industrial rate payers that would be affected by this? Do we, do we have any look-through as to who they are and, and, you know, what, what they do?
Well, we did have a number of rate pales that wrote to us when the change first happened. And they tended to be very small rating units where they used it for private storage or whether they had a small, maybe they were an electrician that, that used it for storing their equipment there between jobs. So very much a small one-to-person operation that, that could be used for industrial or, 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 or storage purposes, but generally very small operations, all, all over the board, all different types of, of business that was happening in them.
Sort of ballpark, do you have any idea like how many maybe complaints or, or feedback you've had around, around these?
There was about twenty in the original paper that we brought up, where, where there was especially people that were using those industrial units for, for private storage for, of their own goods and, and vehicles and that type of thing. So we didn't have, we have, oh, we had, we had a number of other inquiries from, from rate pales who, who saw the very large increase to the industrial rate. And so I wouldn't and maybe a hundred, hundred and fifty inquiries at that time at the beginning of the year.
Do you think, do you think most of those would fall into that two fifty category?
I think that a large proportion of them would, yes.
Yeah, okay. And I guess just the, just to be very clear, the, the sort of justification for the different differentials? What, what are the, the kind of main reasons for those?
Main reasons that the, the last council made the changes in the long-term plan was about fairness and equity, particularly around the residential rates, and also looking at the activities that, that the, each category paid for, particularly the transportation activities, that was one of the key parts, not only the transportation activity, but, but mainly the transportation activity. So they looked at the residence, level of residential rates allocation and also the impact between the, the commercial and industrial on, on activities such as the transportation activity.
And so if, for example, transport was, was one of the main drivers, is there a feasible way to target rate businesses, for example, that, that have bigger impact from a transportation?
So the, the reason that the industrial rating units were, were specified as, as using more of the, the transportation system is the heavy vehicle use, really. Heavy vehicles cause a lot more damage to the roads and we need bigger and heavier roads in those industrial areas. So if you have an industrial subdivision, then we have to put what bigger and heavier roads there, which do need more frequent maintenance and there's quite a bit of a cost to that, regardless of what you're doing in that subdivision, that road is there. So we don't have lots of detail about the traffic movement in, in all parts of the city. That's, that's quite a large exercise that would be, we don't have that information.
Yeah, I guess we've, we've talked about rates before and we've talked about, you know, they are quite a blunt instrument. And, and obviously there's, there's people get, I guess you call it collateral damage, but yeah, like, I'm, I'm just, just trying to understand if, if there's a fairer way, for example, that targeted rate to users. I'm, I'm just asking from a, from a council perspective, would we have a way to be able to fairly target, like, through a targeted rate, be more fair as to, you know, the damage or, or the, the impacts that they have on our community?
Possibly congestion, tax or something alternative in, in that type of area. But there's nothing in the district valuation rule that would help us understand the actual heavy vehicle use on a rating unit.
So, yeah, it's, it's, it would be really hard to, to more fairly represent the usage with, with our current systems.
Yeah, it would be, so that's why it is a, it is a blunt instrument, yeah, and local tax.
Okay, no, that's, that's perfect. Any other questions? Oh, have you, is there an updated table, was there?
Yeah, sorry about that, when I did talk about the table earlier on, councillor Crowther had asked for two more models in that table. And, and that was looking at the residential allocation of sixty-six point three percent, which is the, the current status quo long-term plan resolution. And councillor Crowther asked what that would look like under the new industrial definition. And if, if there was a recombined commercial industrial option. So that's the, the table that you've now got, I've got a hard copy if anyone does need it, but it should be with you now.
And then install it, so as a, as a separate attachment, which is alternative model residential sixty-six. If elected members want to have a look at that.
We do have hard copies, if anyone can find it easier.
Yeah, councillor Shaola.
One, one quick question, just looking at the recommendation around changing, it's, it's come to you around changing the industrial category, but then you're talking about, you're looking at these things from an area where, you know, the riding infrastructure requires a lot of heavy vehicles, they'll use those roads. Some of those smaller businesses may not have, you know, need the, the, either the B-trains and the heavy vehicles, but as an option to whether you're changing the category, could the industrial categories still stay? But a certain type of property under a size gets a point eight or a point seven five of that category. From an administration point of view, would that be simpler? Or are they both?
So what was the course? Under, under the resolution, you, you basically, there still is an industrial and a commercial rating category and they're still split. And all, all we're looking at in the resolution is to move seven hundred of the smaller ones out of the industrial at this, at this point. And that, that is a, a, a factor that's in the district valuation rule and that you can use for tag, you know, to, to set a, a, a rating category in the act.
Councillor Crowther.
Yeah, thank you, Jim, for, I, I know I gave you incredibly late notice to produce that. I, my brain didn't work quickly enough to get to Jim on Friday, so got to him this morning. And I just want to clarify the, the status quo, second column on that. Are those numbers for residential meant to be the same as the, as the fourth and sixth columns of that table, uh, under the, you know, the various scenarios for residential? Because you're still, you're still doing sixty-six point three percent of the same total rates, aren't we? So wouldn't they be, wouldn't they be the same? Well, actually, yeah, the, the first, like, first column is, but second column's not for some reason. Just wanted to make sure I'm not missing some nuance there. I didn't mean to put you on the spot because I know I've given you a few seconds to produce it, so I'm not. But I'm just, I guess, just so that we're all informed, I guess the, the point, the point behind it was to, to anchor. If people wanted that, for me, that would be helpful to sort of see if we stick with the plan to have the same residential rate ratio, yeah, whatever, then, then to see what the effect would be on the industrial, commercial and that scenario. So it just provides us with a little, little tweak on the options.
So I guess the difference between the two is that in column one and two, we're looking at twenty percent industrial, which is the current one, whereas in, in column three and four, where the industrial is nineteen percent maintaining its current level after you've taken the seven hundred out. So it's, it's, that would then reduce the, the median, but yet wouldn't reduce the overall.
Changes happen in the commercial and the industrial, not the residential, so.
So if we just think of it as the residential, the.
Yeah, I know what your question is and I can see why you would ask it. Let me, let me go away and try and explain it once, because the, the model basically takes the entire rating database and I iterate until I get to that number that you wanted and it pushes out the answers.
Probably just, yeah, probably just where those rate payers are a little bit as well, because that would slightly change it. So I, I just, further to this, and, you know, we're talking about fairness and, and that sort of thing. So have we looked at or, you know, done a feasibility, for example, on, on, you know, Airbnb? Because, you know, I, I guess something like that, they are competing with commercial businesses that, that provide accommodation, yet they're under a residential rate and the, the commercial businesses are paying commercial rates. So have we, have we looked at that and the feasibility of that?
This question comes up pretty much every council, it's, it's sometimes twice in the term of the council. Because, because obviously, there's some, some of it is quite, for a hotelier, they're thinking this feels unfair. But when Airbnbs don't get charged so much, not so. Basically, the first thing you would be doing is, this is hypothetical, you'd be saying, what is our funding issue that we've got? And how do we want to address that? And you may then get to make a proposal, which would go through for consultation. So in Auckland, the, their, their funding issue was how do we fund events? And they thought that eventually the, the mayor believed that it would be a good way to fund it through the Airbnb and short-term accommodation. So as you know, that went to the High Court and it went to the Supreme Court. And that eventually gave us that really very solid decision that says that governance of council can make any decision they want. And the courts should stay out of that decision. But it did caveat that, saying that you do need to have a very robust process to follow the, the Local Government Act. And in that local government, you, you need to spend some time doing pre-consultation, consultation, et cetera, that way the way through. So as you know, Auckland already did that with the first time that they did it. They, they spent two years on that type of project to get to the, to the, the, the short-term accommodation, local tax. And then they stopped it during the COVID period and they haven't started it up again. Now, part of that reason is because it's very difficult to administer. And now that's just one aspect of it, the administration costs. And they had like effectively detectives on their, on their team to try and find out and interrogate and stand at corners to see who was moving in and out of properties. That's how difficult it was. So there are some, some software agents looking at selling some information that says we can tell you with a bit more certainty. But it doesn't take away the large administration effort, so that's one part. The second part is, in the previous papers, we've always taken up the, the impact on the, the equity question about hoteliers versus short-term accommodation. And what we were always able to show was that five two-bedroom apartments in the mountain pay far more rates than a motel with five two-bedroom units. So if you're looking at equitable sort of rating aspects, that, that at the moment, there is no equitable rating of those five properties against the one with the same impact, two-bedroom units, two-bedroom units. So the, the bottom line is that you can look at that, but it, it would take some time before you want to make any decisions to consult with the community. And it also may have an impact on how many people come to Taronga and spend money in the businesses around here.
Is that the same, like, is, is that, you know, those assumptions around five two-bedroom units paying more than, than the motel? Is that the same with the, the new rates and, and the differentials?
Yes, yeah, still there, still within that boundary.
Okay. And secondly, with, you know, Airbnb now, they're all registered with IRD. You know, you have to pay GST now on, on that short-term accommodation. So does that give a simpler pathway as, as you can identify those businesses or?
It, it could eventually become that. At the moment, Airbnb is just one group of, of short-term accommodation. And if some people don't want to go through Airbnb, because they have to do that, they may change to another platform. So eventually that might happen, I haven't seen any council use it yet. And I do understand that there is an invite to, to talk to Airbnb about what they might be able to, to sell us and offer us in, in that respect. So we, we could look at that at some point, we haven't yet.
Do you know that's the same with Boca Batch or any of the others? They all have to comply with the same tax, you know, legislation, but we don't have access, that's what you're saying.
We don't have access to that information yet.
No, that's, that's well answered, thank you. Any other? All right, well, thank you very much for your time and, and for, yeah, answering, answering all those questions. I think before we, before we put the resolution up, I'd just like to open, open it up again for discussion as to whether we, we agree or not, you know, with, with excluding the, the smaller rating units. And, yeah, has anyone, anyone got any comments or councillor Taylor?
I think given the feedback we got early on, it was very early in our tenure, so we're probably very sensitive to anyone telling us anything. So take that with a pinch of salt. But I, I do look at the small operators, you look at them and what they're doing in those units. And it just doesn't equate to industrial to me. So to me, it's a fair and equitable and sensible decision to make.
So, Schola.
I agree, and I think I certainly got a number of.
Um, I agree, and I think I certainly got um a number of um queries from um small owners of smaller units that were unhappy with being charged industrial. And from what I could understand from them, they weren't. So it was great to hear um from Jim that most of the queries that we had gotten passed on um were enabled under this new um option to to go back into commercial. So I think it's um, I I also agree. Um, as um Councilor Taylor has said, that it's a good option and it's great to hear that it's a easy to administer. That's a um that was, that works for me too.
Councilor Morris?
I think it's a poor option, um because when you look at changing the structure of the differential away from those percentages, reducing the uh industrial percentage. You are actually benefiting uh significantly folks at the higher end. So I know that we're we're looking at the small industrial units. I know that's how the whole conversation has evolved around the small industrial units. Yes, they get a benefit, but big time benefit goes to the port of Taoranga and other industrial, uh big industrial um complexes that have a significant impact on our city. And the loser out of this decision is the residential rate payer. So if you're going to structurally change where we're heading to in terms of those percentage rates allocations, I think we've got to be really cognizant of what we're doing here. Okay, the port of Taoranga is benefiting from this decision. Residential rate payers are getting hit by this decision. So if it's the intention that we look after those smaller industrial units, my view, this is far too blunt an instrument. I think it needs to be, there needs to be a much more nuanced approach brought back to council. This is not the way to do it, in my view.
Sorry, Councilor Morris, can I just, are you talking around the um the allocation of rates? Is that is that what you were saying in in that or or actually taking out the the two hundred and fifty meter square units?
Yeah, I'm talking about the um fixed proportion, changing that by percentage. I think that is the serious. And I would I would urge colleagues to really reflect on that. I think that is the serious implication if we agree with this decision today.
Councilor Roseboom?
Well, uh uh thank you, Mayor. Well, contrary to Councilor Morris, I'm in favour of this and support this as as is. The the major regional feedback I've been getting from the Tarraco Business District is the most people affected by the original industrial commercial rate and small business owners. And by small, I mean first time couples going into business, they were the most affected. Yes, there were other storage capacity to it, but the bulk of the businesses that were driven out of the Tarraco were small family first time business owners were driven out of the Tarraco business estate, purely because they were caught up in an industrial rate. And they, and to be very clear, rates from a commercial investment perspective, developer builds a a set of business um entities, the rates are a full cost recovery. So whatever we set the rates, that get passed straight on to the business leasing the building. So they took the valuation and the rates increase in one year, and it was too much for them, small business. This is one way that we can encourage small business growth in Taoranga and support first time business couples into business and help grow the business and help create jobs in Taoranga. So I fully support this motion.
Thank you. I just want to be clear, we have two issues, I guess, we're we're talking about here. One is is the removal of um any property under two hundred and fifty meters square.
I really like support the two fifty figure as being the cutoff point.
Yeah, um and then the second point is, uh, you know, the fixed proportions of of general rates in the category. I think that's what Councilor Morris was talking to. I'm sorry, Jim, I just had had one more point of clarification um in the table on on uh page thirty nine, uh which is um paragraph thirty. Just that, those last two columns, it's the same differentials. Uh, I'm just just trying to figure out, is that is that with the new industrial definition? Or is that status quo with with the same differentials?
It's status quo with the same differentials.
Okay, all right. So that's, so we don't have that, the same differentials uh.
Yeah, we haven't moved seven hundred or half a billion of capital value out, so it's the it's the same differentials as this year, two point one and two point six with with the current policy.
Yeah, okay. All right, no, that's that's useful, but we don't have the, sorry, we don't have that change in the new industrial definition with the same differentials. We don't have that calculation, do we?
That's column two and three, where the new new industrial definition, with with the same.
So we're just
Same differential, yeah.
Yeah, we're just, that's fine. We're just, yeah, we're just looking at the impact of that. So, no, that's that's helpful. Thank you. Um, all right, so, yeah, I guess um m- my major concern is we've made a lot of changes in rates and, you know, the it it's, we need some stability uh to to enable uh people to to adjust um and and understand what what has happened. And obviously, in line with with the differentials going up last year, we had a lot of valuation and uh impact uh for our commercial and and industrial rate pass, which which saw some some very large rate rises. So, you know, I very much support stability um and and trying to to keep things as as simple as possible. Uh, I'm I'm still unconvinced um around the uh removing two hundred and fifty meters square uh units from the industrial category. Uh, and the reason is I I don't understand well enough as to who those those people are. Um, you know, I I absolutely understand Martin's um comments. Uh, if if it is small businesses that that have moved home rather than uh units, um and it is, you know, predominantly str- uh personal storage, then then yes, um it does make sense. Um, I I guess I'm just not there. Uh, again, around that stability, you know, I very much think we try to keep the differentials as as close as they were last year, so that, you know, everyone has a a fairly uniform rates increase. I think, uh, you know, as as I said, I I think we need to give our our people some certainty as to to where things are at and and not chop and change um around. So, you know, I think that's just the the challenge to the council. If whatever we do, um we have to, we have to be prepared to stick by and and not not chop and change every year. Uh, you know, but on the proviso that we aren't, um, you know, we don't have that collateral damage, which is always going to be hard to hard to um uh stop. Any other discussion? Councilor Crowther?
Um, yeah, I I I think there are probably three different issues for me. Um, one of them is that I would support um having the residential move by exactly the same amount as was proposed in the long term plan, meaning this to sixty six point three percent, um which would be the increment that would have got us in the twenty twenty seven, twenty eight year to the sixty five percent share that residential would have. Um, so that seems to me to be a different issue. Um, and I guess I'd foreshadow an amendment if if the majority of my colleagues were wanting to change the industrial commercial split to actually keep the residential the same. Um, the second thing is, I guess I have a challenge with, although I think it's based on very good intention and very good work by staff to present the option, I think fundamentally there would be so many um situations across the city where there would be exceptions to you know, to what seems like a fair rate that someone would be paying. And you could put all sorts of arguments, including the Airbnb one that we just heard. Um, and I think it's simpler and ultimately could end up being just as fair to have um industrial as industrial, commercial as a commercial and residential as residential. And there will be unattended consequences all all over the place, but um, you know, for for every two hundred and fifty square meter or less business that is using it like a residential storage, there's someone else who won't be. And then I also have to question, what's the point of sort of zoning and the rate system in general, if we're going to try and break it? Because we see one area where it's unfair, then you, I would suggest you want to break it again. Um, and look at the difference between the high high valued um industrial who have a large transport component. And that gets me to the third point, which is where all this started a few years ago. Um, and staff have gone through a whole lot of stuff on this issue, and I still think the best direction of travel is to sort of hold to what we're planning to do for now, but to do a thorough review of the commercial industrial split, because in my view, the, you know, the transport is the by far the biggest component. We've got an IFF um analysis that allocated half of that I IFF transport levy to commercial and industrial, is my understanding, and half to residential. That we've got a model there that we can sort of tweak to apply it to a targeted transport rate. It would be, in my view, much fairer. Um, and it would cut to the to the core of the issue. And and I guess the last thing I'd just say is that the um to me, the differential is probably more important than the share. So I'm not sure whether I ultimately would think that the sixty five percent is the key thing. But when I look at a comparison of the councils, which Jim kindly provided, I would note that Auckland is a regional council as well, a unitary authority. And regional councils, certainly our one, don't apply the same differential. So that is partly why the differential is is um a little bit lower than it would otherwise, in my view. And secondly, that despite that, um the the only council with a lower differential than we will be proposing for an industrial is Christchurch. And and even that is higher than our commercial differential. So I think we're, you know, to say that there's a sweet spot of sixty four, I think misses the point really, which is the differential, we are still going to be across commercial industrial by far the lowest and have traditionally been, and our residential rate payers have paid way more than they should have in the last few decades.
Uh, Councilor Curran?
Uh, I do support the resolutions. I think it's important to um to think about the justification of any tweaking. And in my mind, what we heard from those smaller um industrial units was fairly clear in terms of actual use. So to me, it's an easy one, a bit of a tweak and it'll be generally accepted um by all the other industrial units, because they would understand. And when I drive in those areas, and I've visited a few businesses that, you know, operate out of those multi-unit developments. And in my mind, it's very clear that they don't provide a huge impact in terms of trucks and transportation. And one could argue that a commercial area, and particularly retail, or or a lot of other commercial activities actually cause more cost on the council to address pure volume, and that's congestion. I understand the trucks demand, you know, in some of the areas, a higher level of road service, service, surface. But I think um that would be greatly outweighed by the huge demand of people getting to their workplace or in retail, people visiting um those commercial centres and those commercial properties. So, you know, it's a blunt instrument, but I think uh basically what we've got now is uh i- i- is good, and we're just making tweaks. And also in terms of responding to Councilor Morris around the impact on the residential rate, I mean, that's very small compared to the benefit they've had over the years, because we didn't used to have the differential. We are the odd man out nationally. All the other centres have had the differentials, uh, commercial, residential for many, many years. So the the residential um rate payer is loving this, because otherwise they'd be paying probably thirty percent more in rates if we kept the old regime that we introduced a few, if we, you know, if we looked at the ration, previous regime. So a a a little bit of a tweak here and there, and it is minor. Um, the residential rate payers are winning hugely by um the reintroduction of res- of of um differentials. Because I remember the discussion at the time when we got rid of the differential. Stephen Town was the chief executive at that time and and he got the clear message that we need to get rid of it because it was hard to justify uh a commercial um differential and and consultants were used and we got a very clear report. And I, we can't justify it, so we'll remove it. And hello, today we'll put it back in. Um, and a big reason for that is around affordability, because um rates are becoming um really unaffordable and by putting a lot of that uh demand onto the commercial industrial who maybe can, you know, aim it on their tax and uh get the GST back, you know, of course, that's an argument as well. So I think, you know, in saying all that, that um the way forward is to do a few little tweaks, and this is just one of them.
I I think we are fairly split around the table, but my reading of it is we are leaning towards the recommendation. Um, if we could just get the recommendation up as as written.
Oh, I'm happy to know that we accept the recommendation as is.
Yep. Yeah, okay, well, who who would you like to ask?
Um, ju- just to Jim or Paul, um, just, yeah, Kevin and I just realised, the 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 resolution, it it states um, whoops, I've lost my place on it, but it it states about the um proceeding with the, have you got it in front of you there? The
Towards the long term plan?
Yeah, the long term plan. Um, but but the, I just want to make sure that we're talking the sixty six point three. I I spoke the words before that that was my understanding of the of the number for this year, but the original tables didn't include those na- those numbers, but the one that Jim did this morning did include that number. I just want to make sure I'm not, I I know it's an important issue, so I don't want to have clouded anyone's understanding if if there was a difference in numbers that I should have said, but that's that's my understanding, is it was a three year process to go from where we are now to sixty five.
Sixty six?
So that's correct, it's a it's a three year process, and at the moment it's thirteen point three for commercials, so that's why an option, the recommended one, option two, move the industrial and carry on with the the decision to to do the proportions, but tweak them to sixty six, that's where you get the option to.
But that is a, that's the long term plan. I my understanding from reading the long term plan was that it was sixty five, not sixty six. Because it says on page ten of the plan.
Yeah, so this is saying continue with the plan to to fix them over the three years, but change the proportion from sixty five to sixty six if if it doesn't. So that we can clarify that.
Be- because because it sort of says continues with the long term plan decision, implying that the residential rating would become sixty six in the long term plan. I just wanted to make sure people understood that was not in the long term plan, even though.
From, yeah, so maybe we need from sixty five to sixty six. No, that's going from sixty five as in the long term plan.
And the the industrial was moving from twenty to nineteen because of the move of those properties and, yep.
Belabor it, but I think it's important.
No, that stays the same, yeah. Okay, so Councilor Rosebooms moved that motion. Um, if we've got a second up? As as the recommendation there? Yeah, for the substantive, yeah, so Councilor Curran will move uh will second that. Um, Councilor Roseboom, would you like to?
Yes, I would, thank you, Mayor. This, going back to what I said previously, this is about supporting growth in Taoranga. And remember, this business estate, as in others, were originally developed under our previous rating system. I don't think some of these developers would have built there had they known that this two point six differential was going to be imposed on their, what what they considered to be a light commercial building. As a result of them being caught up in this, they've lost a lot of custom. They were at a higher occupancy rate before this differential came into place, and they were selling quite well. In the last twelve months, the occupancy rate has dropped and they're not being sold. This is the impact of this imposed differential. I'm not opposed to the differential, it was how it was done. I'm not opposed to the differential, it was how it was done, was the problem. It was imposed upon people and it unfairly affected small businesses and new business owners. Council should not be in the business of pretty much putting the skids under business growth or young people wishing to get into business and create a new life for themselves and also create employment in Taronga. So I support this. Yes, it's not ideal, as has been clearly stated, rates is a very blunt income mechanism. But this gives better equity to small um, a, a young couple, small businesses wishing to develop and grow in Taronga. Those of us who were at the Young Business Awards a couple of weeks ago, it was a lovely night. And we got to see lots of young innovative people developing great businesses in Taronga. And I commend all those people that take on the journey of going into business. Just we at council should not be in the business of trying to put the skids under them before they even get started. So I do support this motion and I wish all business owners all the best in Taronga. Thank you.
Councillor Curragh.
Um, uh, I tend to agree, but um I think a- around the people that have all the businesses that have shifted out of those um buildings or the developers who are finding difficult to sell, there's more amount around those, the dire economic uh trading con- conditions that businesses are struggling with at the moment, rather than the impact of, of the rate. So it's a cumulative effect, obviously that had when they looked at their bottom line, it's probably more significant. But I, I, I think it's the, the economic conditions rather than the, the rates that would probably um affected those two groups of people. Uh, but I think, as I said before, it's a sensible move and so I support it.
Councillor Morris.
Thank you, Mayor, I do support A and B. Uh, and I think that A and B achieves what the previous two speakers have mentioned. However, I think we need to turn our mind to the impact of C. Uh, and that is um a great benefit to uh the larger industrial uh landholders, in particular the port of Taronga. Uh, and the impact then lies on the residential rate payer. In terms of the discussion around differentials, um it's been widely acknowledged that the city hasn't had the finances to be able to invest in transport infrastructure over the years. That's a direct result of not having differentials. And I would also say that um if we're suggesting that it's a, a minor impact to the residential rate payer, I'd ask folks to uh be cognizant of the fact that because we haven't had a differential, the residential rate payer has held the can for the city and all of the commercial and industrial activity in the city uh over the past twenty years since that differential's been gone. So I do support A and B. I do not support C. Uh, so I would request, uh, subject to your discretion, Mayor, that we do, uh, take it in parts. And uh I'd like to move an amendment. Uh, no, a new D. Uh, which reads that uh, D, requests a paper to the eleventh March council meeting relating to the urban growth full benefit and urban growth wide benefit targeted rates. So what I'm doing now is I, I am putting this into this resolution because it's a rating resolution. It has nothing to do with what we've been discussing in question time. This relates to the imposition uh of a targeted rate on Papamoa when other suburbs in the city don't have a targeted rate for transport. The impact of passing this amendment is that staff will bring a paper uh for which the information already exists because a paper was brought to the commission. Uh, and that will bring that to council for consideration. So I'm not asking for your, uh, well, I would be, but I'm not asking for your support uh of the change to the targeted rate at this stage. I'm asking for your support that that comes to council for information and the, the elected council makes that decision. Um, pick on that and then you can speak to it later. Thanks, Rick, I appreciate that.
Um, have you got any more discussion that's?
Yeah, yeah, I think that, I, I have this hope that the longer I speak, the more concise I'll be, but it, it just doesn't, it just doesn't work. It doesn't work. Uh, no, I just would like this paper brought back because um I do believe that, and we discussed earlier around the five transport projects around the city, only one, the Papamoa Eastern Change is being whacked with a residential targeted rate. It's a targeted rate over the entire geographic area, but that's predominantly over residential. The other transport project citywide, good people of Papamoa are helping to fund Tamanu Wataki Orta Papa, potentially Memorial Park. Other such programs across the city, either we're one city or we're a collection of suburbs. I think we're one city, let's all row together, Hawake Ekenoa, all together in the same boat without exception. That's me speaking to the amendment, D. Thank you.
Uh, could I just ask, um, Paul, please, could you just maybe make a comment around um this and?
Um, yes, I can. Um, I, I guess the first thing I would say is one is, you know, the paper was done as part of the long-term plan. So there's been a lot of change to that, so it, it, it can meet the timeframe. The other word that I would say is, um, like I guess we would normally advise, you know, rating structural changes to be part of long-term plans to be considered together with other elements of funding and financing, including user fees and any other change. I know we've been talking about, which is relative, a change to the percentages, but it's not a change in the structure. So um it, purely a decision for council, we, we can bring that paper, but it wouldn't be in context of other rating issues.
Thank you, Paul. Uh, councillor Curragh.
Um, thank you. Being uh a, a neighbour of Papamoa, um, in my ward, the Arataki Ward, um, I've been to a number of Papamoa uh residents and rate payers associations meetings. And I certainly do hear councillor Morris speak, um, you know, regarding to this issue and the support from the uh members of that association in terms of pursuing it. And um so I would certainly like to um consider the matter formally via a, a paper. Um, and certainly highlight to me whether it has got merit or not, so.
Uh, councillor Morris, so just so we're clear, this is, this is uh looking at removing the targeted rate on the P R, is that, is that the main purpose?
Yes, that's correct, yeah, it's referred to as full benefit and wide benefit, but that is in the, in effect what it is.
Yep, thank you. Um, is there anyone else that'd like to speak to the amendment? Councillor Crowther?
Yeah, I'm, I'm happy to support the amendment, but um I guess I hear Paul's comments. I think it is important when we get the paper to understand the other pieces to this big puzzle around transport funding. Um, and I guess there could be all sorts of eventualities from there. I don't know if we can work through those this year, that'd be my caution, but I mean, we might decide to increase the targeted rate and who knows what could happen.
Uh, just another, sorry, question, just for clarification from Paul or Christine around consultation, because I'm, I'm guessing this is quite a major change um to the rate pass. So what would that require?
It absolutely would require consultation. Um, as it would impact on the remaining rate players, obviously, if the, the split was changed. So the, the total amount obviously is not going to change um in terms of that twelve point five or ten, but the allocation will change within those. So we would need to consult because of the impact on rating groups.
That be done through the annual plan process?
Yeah.
Yes.
Is anyone else like to speak to it? Yeah, to the amendment, yeah. Uh, I think, yeah, my, my comments would be um like, while I am absolutely happy to look at this and, and understand it, I think it should be taken in the context of um what, what we're trying to achieve and, and doing that, probably through that, that uh long-term plan process seems to make sense when we can, we can look at all the other moving parts, um, but that's, that's just my uh comment. So I won't support the amendment. Um, and is there any, any other comments?
So if it fails due to the timing and it would be supportive if the mover changed to, for the next L T P, um, what would be the process? A new motion, okay.
So I would support that.
Are the amendors happy to make that so?
But then what we do is you remove the eleventh March because we wouldn't need to work to that timeline, so be brought to a future council meeting. Um, meeting for consideration in the next L T P process.
That's to you.
Yeah, through the chair, just as a matter of course, we do a rating review process for every long-term plan, but um in relation to this, we can just highlight the fact that this is a specific part of the Rating Act that would need to be packed up as part of that process.
Therefore, we have an amendment uh for consideration. Um, and I'd like to put that to the council now as, yep.
So I thought we'd separated B and C as.
No, we're just doing the amendment, yeah, yeah. Yeah, so we're just, just doing the amendment at the moment. Um, so all those, all those in favour, oh, sorry.
Just for absolute clarity, at the moment, there's, there's no decision for any long-term plan amendment. So the long-term plan would be not next year, but the year after, just for absolute clarity, yeah.
Starts next year though, so. Yeah, okay, um, all those in favour? All right, those against? That amendment is carried and now becomes part of the substantive. Uh, is there any further discussion on, on uh the substantive? Councillor Taylor? We will, we, yeah, we will take this in parts. Um. Yeah, councillor Crowther? Are we talk, is talking to this, this substantive? Yeah.
Um, yeah, I, I, I guess, as I mentioned before in the discussion, I, I would like to see the residential um component follow the trajectory that was in the long-term plan. Therefore, I would propose an amendment to see to say that um continues with the long-term plan. Whoops. I should have looked on here. Sorry, I thought I could just read the screen. Um, there you come. Continues with the long-term plan decision to move to a fixed proportion of the general rates for each rating category to re- to retain the proportion for the residential rating category at sixty five percent. Um, and I'm open to suggestions, but, and, and to um allocate the commercial and industrial rating to the proposed levels. Um, and I mean, what I'm trying to say is Jim's, Jim's amended um spreadsheet that was put up this, this morning, but um I'm not quite sure how to, how to refer to that. So um, but the, the core being to change that, if, if we want to have it industrial at nineteen, that's fine, but something's got to add up to get to the sixty five in the end for the residential. To change the.
So you want, you want it sixty, you want it basically back to what was in the long-term plan, which was sixty five fifteen twenty?
Residential, and then I'm aware that some people support B, in which case that would have implications of what the percentage would be for industrial and, and commercial. Um. Why?
We just change it.
I, well, I don't know, I, I it's, I mean, the numbers don't add up, putting it simply, like fifteen and nineteen add up to thirty four. And I want them to add up to thirty five.
Okay, so, so if we.
Well, that the commercial and industrial rating categories total thirty five percent.
Yeah. So you want, you want an amendment that basically says, um, yeah, we keep residential.
At sixty five. So continue with the L T P decision to move the proportion of general rates for each rating category, retain the proportion for the residential rating category to sixty five and and I don't know what, somehow.
Right.
Yeah.
The point of assistance, Mayor, I, I, without um getting numeralexic with it, I speak for myself there. Um, if there's a full stop after rating category, I think that may achieve what councillor Crowther intends. Um, okay, no. Subject to.
I, I guess the problem is that, um, I, well, can I refer to the table? Um, the table that was, you know, that was tabled um at the meeting today. Because that's, I, I guess according to the, um, you know, the, the proportions and, and here.
So can we just change this to sixty five with the remainder made up of commercial and industrial in the fact that depending on some of the decisions will flow down?
That's what I'm trying to get.
So. Oh, sorry, councillor Taylor.
Um, can I make a suggestion? We delete C and leave it as it is at the moment. If you think about the reason we're moving these people from industrial to commercial, it is because they are in the wrong category, we believe. Therefore, the balance of the um split on the overall rates, I don't think should change. Essentially, we should be leaving it the same as what it is in the long-term plan, which leaves your rate payer, your residential rate payer in the same position. Um, and it just effectively sorts itself out between the other two categories.
Can we have a comment?
Either needs to be split based on a, a differential or a percentage in terms of the, the difference between commercial and industrial. What you, what you, what you could do
the lo- the long-term plan is twenty fifteen.
The other suggestion would be given, um, as you said, we'd, we'd do a full rating review into the long-term plan as leave, leave it as it looks and then review the allocation at, at that point. Problem with that will be is that you can continue to move them from up and down.
Just through the chair, so if you, if you want sixty five percent for residential, you still need to stipulate the split between the commercial and industrial somehow.
Yeah, i- is, is there a way to do the sixty five and then for, is this, this is coming back again for the annual plan? Or is this, this is the final decision point? Because can we actually ref- have the what was in basically this other, see what happens when people vote on B and then come back with two options relating to B at the next meeting as a, as another item? Because that will determine what the split will be. We, we don't know that till, unless we vote on B first and then we put up the wording of C, but I don't know if we can do that. Because we will want different numbers depending on whether B goes through or not, that's the crux of it.
Well, I think, I think probably the best way to deal with this is actually we go back to the substantive. We take it in parts. We take it in parts and obviously then we will put B first and then we will put C. And if C obviously makes it, otherwise we'll have to find a different resolution to to C. All right, so is there any further discussion of this? I guess in in my case, I, yeah, I want I want more stability and certainty and and while I'm not sure it's perfect, you know, I I very much support trying to keep it as as level as as we possibly can. So everyone's rates increases this year, you know, are fairly uniform and and in line. And we, you know, I know some of some of these tables, you know, we've got, we've got, you know, for the example, that new industrial definition, maintain the industrial at nineteen, you know, we've got a very big relatively increase in that, in the the commercial sector, which I would like to try to try to reduce. So that that means that, you know, it's it's a it's a pretty a pretty hard one, but I don't I don't agree with changing the the C. I think I think C works well, try to keep that stability and and not make any big changes now. And and once we've had that stability for a couple of years and and obviously part of the long term plan, I think that would be an appropriate time to to maybe tweak it. Then I'm I'm pretty torn on B. I I, you know, I think if if it is small businesses and and, you know, mums and dads with storage units, then that is a sensible option, but I'm I'm not a hundred percent certain on that. Although I guess you can say with a two hundred and fifty square meter site, it would be hard to run a heavy industrial business with with B trains coming in and out. So hopefully, yeah, hopefully that that doesn't, you know, I guess, give relief to to someone that is, you know, it is it is sort of doing the damage. So so that's where I I sit. But go back to to Counselor Roseboom, have you got any closing comments?
Yeah, no, I'm gonna just basically re, I go what I've already said. I supported the whole A, B and C as one item. We can remove some of the percentages and say as long as it's consistent with the long term plan, until the next long term plan, then we can go over it again. But helping to support business growth, job growth in town goes on to my key aims, and I believe this can achieve that.
Now, we're gonna take this in parts, so we might take A and D. A, B, D. Okay, A, B, D together. Okay, we'll do, okay, we'll do A and B, sorry, we'll do A and B together. So all those in favour of A and B? Aye.
Sorry, I'll just need to. Taylor. Roseboom. Baker.
It's everyone but Crowther. Yeah. I'm with on four, yeah. And against, Counselor Crowther? Yeah, so that's carried. I'd now like to take C. All those in favour? Sorry, I'll just just let let you have a read of that. So. So if you if you're happy to take this as as is, then we will, then and if it fails, then we're able to look at other options. So obviously Glenn has already foremotioned. Well, we we were talking about it and then we said we'll we'll put this. Well.
But I think the mayor can make.
Yeah. So we're we're gonna put this one to the the floor as as is. And obviously, if if it fails, then we can look at other options. So all those in favour of C, raise your hands, aye.
Roseboom and the mayor.
And correct, those against? Okay, that motion is has failed. So therefore, can we have a suggested? C?
Yeah, the through through the chair, I can make a suggestion that we could say the residential rating category at sixty five percent. And for the eleventh of March council meeting, we'll bring the options of on around the commercial and industrial percentages.
Into nod or shake or both?
We report back on further apportionment.
Options, options for the commercial industrial split. Amendmentation by the twenty twenty seven, twenty eight rating year, is that right?
That's that's correct, but it'll it'll transition through twenty five, twenty six. So we'll bring those implications back. That's okay like that, so we can.
Okay. All right, so Counselor, do we need amendment? Yeah, so Counselor Crowther will move. Forgot a second, Counselor Baker. I think we've had enough discussion, so all those in in favour? Oh, yeah. So. So hands up, sorry, if, okay. I'll go against, yeah, yeah. That motion is carried, thank you. Now we've got D, so again, we, all those in favour? Those against? That motion is carried unanimously. All right, thank you very much. We, the the next item is quite large, I was going to try to get it done before lunch, but we might take a break, we'll we'll come back at two o'clock and finish off that and then we have a publicly excluded session after that. So meeting in general, see you at two P M, thank you.
The capital programme to December, there have been a couple of timing changes that mean the actual total capital budget is down at 5.06 million. So that has been presented as a first attachment to this report. Just for clarification, we are really only seeking at this stage to change the 2526 capital budget for that programme and we have provided a detail by each project of what we've sort of moved into later years. So you can start to understand the impacts of that vis a vis what is the LTP, but there are not any formal decisions being sought on those later years. So just if there's any sort of confusion about how to read the material in attachment A on the capital programme. So the main capital adjustments were timing adjustments related to Tarrit Road. They bring forward of funds for Torekora Drive upgrade and some other minor timing adjustments. So in terms of the operational budgets, this presents the baseline operating budget for the annual plan with a 12.5% increase or meeting the 12.5% increase limit, which was discussed by council as the limit that would or the level that would have been in the 2026 LTP with the IFF levy brought back within TCC. So that's where the 12.5% came from. It is not technically the limit of the financial strategy, which is at 12%. So if it were to be the final budget, there would need to be acknowledgement of that in the consultation. But as we know, there are further considerations to look at bringing that budget level below the 12.5%. Even to achieve the 12.5%, which is the LTP level, there have needed to be significant expenditure reductions found within council. And that's because we had a couple of kind of headwinds or things that went the wrong way. One is depreciation overall, the cost of depreciation were higher than assumed in the LTP and that arose mainly from revaluations in transportation. And also a direction from council that we fully fund our depreciation and in the LTP, we were phasing in some of that funding over a couple of years. So both those headwinds gave us challenges as outlined in the report of about 25.6 million and those cost adjustments have been found across various areas. There have also been additional costs coming with the water reform from the regulator who have advised of additional levies of about 0.9 million. And the other significant factor is the LTP assumed 1.5% growth. And the all the numbers we show are net of growth. So the idea of population growth and rating unit growth is that the experience of the rate existing rate payer will be the 12.5%. The latest estimates are that growth for the year is more likely to be about 0.25%. So again, we've had to adjust costs for that. There is potentially an additional cost of continuing to operate QYC Memorial Hall indoor sports area at the same time as operating the new Cameron Road facility. So there is a recommendation for consideration of providing additional operating budget for BBL through their grant of 338,000. And in the attachments, we have provided at that 12.5% level, the whole of council operating budgets and detailed by activity budgets, which have been presented and discussed with council at the last workshop, but this is formally bringing that material into council as an attachment. I'm happy to take questions or I'm happy to take people through the table of operation cost whatever be fair.
Thank you. Any questions? I'll start just yeah, I guess firstly, just to gain a steer, you know, we need to drive this efficiency and we need to, you know, find ways to get more of these costs out because there is some some scary numbers in here. I just had a sort of specific under some of these different different areas, transportation, you know, for a start. I'm just trying to reconcile the the employee related costs to the, you know, to 2024, et cetera. And, you know, there's a huge jump there, yet the the FTEs hasn't gone up significantly. You know, is that due to a lot of capitalised employee costs in previous years? And then less from 25 on.
So the 2024 budgets are actual, sorry, the numbers here are actuals rather than budget. So there was a significant underspend in transport against its budget in 2024, and that's because it held, there were a lot of vacancies held. So if you look at the page above, we have provided some indication of the number of vacancies. So the 27 vacancies in that 2024 year and 37 vacancies the previous year. So that's the reason those actual numbers are less than significantly less than 2025 budget. As well as some restructure and adjustments made, which Nick could talk to.
Yeah, like even if you, you know, 27 minus the 121, you know, gets you down to 90 or, you know, 94 to 120, you know, salaries from 4.4 million to 7.5 million. It's sort of, it doesn't. Yeah, that's, that's either we've employed a lot of top heavy people or yeah, I just, I'm just trying to understand where that where that comes from.
Yeah. So the other information there is we had put in place some salary savings and seeking to get that budget agreed for transport. So they shouldn't actually affect the actual. So so yeah, Nick, do you have any more information on your on that structure?
Couple of big contributors to that. Catherine's right, we had a lot of unpopulated ones last year and one one is the establishment of the major projects delivery group. They're probably the two biggest contributors to that. We have had a steady increase on the capitalised costs and transport. We maintain a relatively big programme for the year 26 with with projects that are already underway and funded by NCTA. So that's, there's a relatively high level of commitment to that. But as we go through the next couple of months, we'll see a change downward in those numbers as well.
Yeah, okay, I just, I'm just struggling. So it's not to do with capitalised costs in 2024. It's just the staff numbers have gone up about 20% and the salaries have gone up 70. So like it's, I'm just trying to reconcile.
We can provide you further breakdowns, but kind of half the top of my head. The kind of things that, and I think we've talked a little bit at the high level, within that EMP that we do have that churn factor, but we do also have capitalisation. And when we brought in a lot of staff, there were very high capitalisation expectations that we review each year based on what we achieve in the way projects are running. And if you're not constructing and you're focusing more at the front end of a project, then there's less ability to capitalise. So I'm suspecting there's been quite a movement down in capitalisation, which means that the actual underlying budget pops up because of the timing of those projects.
Thank you. Council Crowder?
Just following up on that, like, it looks to me like the combined employee and consultant costs are similar for F25 and 26. But I'm just aware that, you know, that when you compare the LTP number, which was done when we were much more optimistic about what we would be needing to do, that that's the number that has shifted a lot on consultants, but hasn't shifted on staff. And I guess the question is, am I correct in thinking we normally hire consultants to do business cases? And they will deliver a business case and then we are trying to upscale our team to deliver projects. So we have some quite expensive but experienced project managers and so forth, which would be increasing our salary costs in this area. And if that is correct, you know, are we sort of on track still or or given that we're not doing Cameron Road, you know, do we need to be getting that 7.5 million employee costs down a bit for this year? That's, I mean, I know it's a leading question, but I'm trying to work through it.
Yeah, well, that's, that's part of the process that we're going through in the reset work that we are doing at the moment and which which is not reflected in the staff numbers at the minute, but they are reflected in the numbers per se. So there's a bit of a, there's a bit of a mismatch in the in the current papers that you've got, got in front of you. And then also with with what we're doing and have been doing recently, the phases we are at, for instance, with Cameron Road, 15 Zav, Tarrit, those projects aren't able to be capitalised at the moment. So and we've had a heavy input and to get those across the the business case day. So we have seen a massive increase in that sphere where we can't capitalise, but actually the works needs, work needs to be done in order to get to that point.
Thank you. That's very helpful. I think it's a clarifier. We might need to wait a little bit longer to see the maybe the final number there once everything's been factored in.
Through through your worship. I just wonder whether or not we don't actually wind the clock back until the five year story of transport and where we were five years ago. And the type of programme that we were delivering or not delivering at that point, because essentially we didn't have a capital programme. Because I think taking a snapshot from one year to the other actually doesn't actually tell us how we've progressed as an organisation. And now the fact that we're delivering a 250, well, we're supporting the delivery of a $250 million project. A hundred million at Papmar, East Interchange. Cameron Road Stage One was over 100 million. And I just think there's a story to be told there, which I don't think these numbers and the growth of that unit are fairly reflected. And it feels to me like it probably needs to be a bit of a deep dive.
Well, yeah, I guess my argument to that is we're talking from 2024 through to 2026. So well, 24, the year, the numbers that so like I understand if we're comparing to 2020 or 2022, but you know, my understanding is and looking at the staff numbers, it's pretty stable. You know, from 2024 through to today. So that's, I guess, why, you know, why that sort of raised a flag to me.
Yeah, and I think actually probably understanding the phases of those projects might be helpful too. But to me, to me, this doesn't fairly reflect the transport activity and there are reasons behind all this. It's just that they're not captured here.
Yeah, that's right. And we did, we did talk about that in the workshop last week as well, where we, where we explained how that 2122 and LTP, we, we had, we had anticipated a certain level of staffing. And what we actually got through the NLP was 95% of what we requested rather than the anticipated 60 of what we asked for. So at that point, we had a we had an increase. But that was also at a time where it was very difficult to to find people to do those roles. And that carried on until last year. So we, and I'm just sort of explaining the reason as to why there were so many empty boxes in the org chart last year and high, high numbers. last year and, and high, high numbers. But we had contractors doing those, filling a lot of those roles instead. And then our contractors that are, that we haven't got on board. So we've, we've taken over a lot of that, that we had contracted out, being done in-house instead. And there's, there's a cost saving in that.
Thank you. Counselor Scholar?
Just, I guess, supplementary to that, it would be really useful going forward for areas like transport to actually have the capitalised costs as well as the OpEx costs, because the, I think we are going to be looking at these numbers. And as we learn a bit more, we're really going to need to understand capitalised F T As and capitalised costs. And, and even when we get the scope of a project, it would be sensible to just actually, you know, make sure that even if it's double doubling up on information, that we do get the policy around how you're treating that and, and the timing of, of how that might be treated in the financials.
Counselor Crowther? Did you have, no, you didn't have a question. Hi, Counselor Taylor?
Can you tell me about, see, what the breakdown is? This is the Bay V news.
So three, three, eight is, is in conjunction with B V L, just a, a calculation of what it's cost for them to run that memorial, Q Y C memorial operationally, because the, in the plan, it was assumed that was closed. And so there was no net increase to run the new facility at Cameron Road. It was just going to be closing that one and that operational budget will fund the new one. However, that got to, to run for the next year, yes.
I understand it isn't closing, which is probably a good thing. But yeah, how, how do we make that three, three, eight? Can we get some kind of a breakdown on that? How they came about the figure? Like, it's just another, give us some more money and be good to know why, how much, what for.
Yes, we can ask them for that.
Yeah, Counselor Morris?
Yeah, question on that. I'm just wondering about the depreciation figure that's attached to Memorial Park as well, because that's an OpEx. But we fund that on Bay V News behalf, but it might be fully depreciated, not sure. And we're not depreciating it because the policy is moving up to Cameron Road. So some understanding about that would be nice.
I suspect it's fully depreciated, but I can confirm that.
I'm jumping down, sorry, I'm getting into some, some line items, but just, just picked a few out. So city events, again, we've got a big jump from twenty four actuals of one point three million up to one point nine in twenty twenty six annual plan. Is there again, a reason that, sorry, this is other operating expenses, which everything else seems quite stable, but that one seems quite out of kilter? This is page eighty nine, city events.
So I'm just making sure I've got the questions. So on, on other operating, the line, other operating has gone from the one point five to one point six to one point eight. So from what I understand from the H R, sorry, the finance business partner is that the line above is two sixty four, which has gone to nothing. So it's a re, re, a change where they're actually allocating some of the grant funding from grants, contribution, sponsorship into the other operating expenses line. So it's within a very small amount of money and you'll see as the total, it's the total's actually gone down that forty thousand.
Okay, no, that's, that's, yeah, that's good. Thank you. Scholar?
Just while we're on city events on that page, and I've got this comment for a number of cost areas is just consultants. If we, you know, like, people that are running city events are usually pretty creative. They know how events operate. They, they're usually pretty experienced. They often stay in that, in that expertise. So it just discourages me to see that we keep saying, yes, we've got consultants in there and they're not really going down. And it's not just here, it's in quite a lot of areas. So I, yeah, it concerns me.
I can make some comment. I think that what we try and do, look, I agree. I mean, obviously, if we've got enough work for a full time person, that's one heck of a lot cheaper than employing consultants. So I think this, and I think my comments about spaces and places, it's just, it's just when we, you know, when we don't have enough staff to do one or two things in a year or, or half a dozen things in a year, or we have a whole range of expertise that's required. So I, I think that we have tried very hard to reduce consultancies and I can give you assurance that we will continue to try to ascertain where there's a full time job for somebody, that we will not use consultants. That's not a defined answer. I know, Counselor, it's just trying to work through the expertise required when you've got a huge range of expertise within our business.
And I, and that's what I'm respecting. I think the people I have met have got a huge amount of expertise and I would like that to be used rather than getting externals. Even this morning, I think we could have been presented by the team rather than getting consultants to come and present to us. And we know the example of the signage, that design. And I just think we really, that it's a culture change for me that I would rather it wasn't in the budget. And then if there's an issue, then you come back. But it's about utilising, you know, everyone talks about how important the staff are and the biggest asset. And one of the best ways to motivate people is to stretch them a little bit. So, you know, give them the benefit of doing something that might be a bit outside the expertise instead of just bringing in consultants. And that's what I'd like to see right across the organisation before we go out to consult in the annual plan. Not just on your team, but
they, they do work really hard, but sometimes, you know, you've got perhaps enough work for one person and a bit more. That bit more needs to be able to, to support another full time person. But thank you for your acknowledgement.
But as my mayor says, we just want to be more efficient. So they actually do manage to get that little bit extra of their job, of a job done. So, thank you.
Community development, sorry, page ninety one. And again, just the, the grants, I know there was a note in the grants around, I think it's Grants for Development Contributions on Community Housing Policy. And is, is that, is that account for the, the increase? And then other operating expenses as well. Again, you know, from twenty twenty four actuals, it's, it's a pretty big jump up to one point one five million.
And the, the, the change in the grant budget is, was an error that was made last year. And the grant that you talked about, the development contribution grant was, was not included. So this is really a timing issue. Sometimes grants are granted this year, but not spent till next year. So it's that commitment that we, we work, sorry, across multi, multi years. Is that right, Catherine? That's my understanding.
If it wasn't, if it was carried forward, it would have been also an error that we must have missed the grant out in that previous year.
Counselor Scholar?
Just on grants, and I, I think it's a question. I noticed that B V L and Toronga Art Gallery Trust, I think, and maybe tourism give out grants and that becomes part of, so basically we, we grant them money and then they grant it to someone else. And, and just when we look at T C C and the reputation and visibility, I'm very happy they might do the work and decide where grants go. But I'd like those grants to come from Toronga City Council so that the people of Toronga City Council know their rates have gone and it might have been administered over here, but they've gone from T C C. So I wonder if we've ever looked at saying, let's, let's make sure that we talk about the grants that are made from the money that's come from ratepayers and not sort of sideline it because that was paid by Bay V News or by Toronga Art Gallery Trust. Probably that's a question. And have we thought about that, Mr. C E O?
Well, I think we've let, I think we've let our council controlled organisations probably manage any allocation of grants. But I'd, I'd take your point that ultimately, if it's, if it's a rate path funded grant, well, then there needs to be some recognition that it actually came from the rate path through Toronga City Council. I, I think what we can do is let's go and look at understanding what grants our council controlled organisations do hand out. Yeah. And have a conversation with our C C Os about how, you know, we can't be part of that and recognise as part of it.
Our next one from me is on animal services, which is page one seventeen. I just had a question around the user fees and why there's a quite a drop off from, from what we expected to collect?
Sorry, in Sarah's absence, my, my understanding was effectively that the last increase meant that there are a lot of dogs that weren't registered, causing the overall revenue to, to drop.
Have we got no way to basically get that compliance, is it?
Yeah, I think we already do door to door knocking. I think we physically visit addresses where we believe there'd be an unregistered dog. And so it's reasonably labour intensive, but we do that.
And what, do you, do you have any understanding of like, what's a fine for an unregistered dog compared to?
I can look it up in the user fees in charge, is she charged?
No, I'm just, just interested as to whether, whether it's worth not registering your dog or not, but.
I can speak. I've got two registered dogs, but never had an experience of having an unregistered one. So.
It's quite a lot.
Oh, that's, that's good. I'm glad to hear we incentivised people registering their dogs.
There are quite a few infringement offences, and if they are in the hundreds, so I can't quite find the non-registration failure to register.
Compared to about one hundred to register, is it? I guess, yeah, another, like building services, for example, obviously, just, just going back to that growth pays for growth. You know, it should, it should cover itself. And I guess the, the message there, just as we've discussed earlier, is we try to find, cut costs out and make the processes more efficient rather than putting up the, the prices to, to cover that. And environmental planning, one twenty one. Do we have any idea of what the, in that one, you know, what is the compliance versus sort of growth allocation?
Mostly growth.
It's a mostly growth. So again, I guess just that if, if it is mostly growth, then, then we should, should be covering covering that better. Counselor Scholar?
Just in terms of the, right at the top, we talk about the debt level is staying the same as the, the L T P. Is that, so we've had some papers on potentially changing covenants and potentially changing debt requirements or opportunities with water. So on what assumptions is that based on? Specifically in regard water and the covenant, please.
So, so water's staying with us through twenty twenty six, so that, that's in. The assumptions are around the opening debt balance, which is dependent on capital delivery this year. So assumptions were made at around four hundred and seventy to four hundred and seventy five million delivery of capital, which is less than was used in the L T P and, and offsets some of that, you know, the, the off balance sheet change. We've also had some faster uplift of I F E. So it's all about cash flows and timing adjustments and we kind of model that through. But again, we can talk you through where the unders and overs were relative to the L T P.
I just think it's really important when we are going out consulting, we will be asked a lot of questions on debt, quite rightly. And I certainly want to know that I'm well informed as to how the calculate, how, what's changed since the, that, that number was, was budgeted or forecasted, or whatever we say it was a year ago. And make sure we're covered on that.
So we can give you a summary of that. And it will be largely around the capital programme delivery this year and budgeted for next year.
If we go down to page one twenty five, regulation monitoring. Again, just have a concern, I guess, that basically our, our, if you look at the other operating expenses, which is effectively the recoveries, is only covering our employee costs. So, you know, it's, it's one of those, those kind of chicken and the egg things. Obviously, we need to make sure that we are monitoring and, and we are, you know, complying with legislation. But when that costs us more than what we're actually getting back, you, you kind of wonder whether we, whether we continue on with it. Is there, like, yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm just interested as to why that, that is costing so much.
So, so probably Barbara will call on to give a bit more detail about what's covered in regulation monitoring. But just to point out that through the long term plan and that funding needs analysis that's done to inform your revenue and financing policy, there's consideration of who benefits from the work that's done. So something like regulation monitoring, it won't be just that there are kind of user pays in there. There may be that there's public benefit from kind of making sure that, you know, pollution doesn't occur or whatever it is. So, but Barbara can give a bit more context.
Done very well. There's a lot in regulation monitoring that's about enforcing. So while there is some recoverables, and sorry, it's been a while since I've been in this activity. While there is certainly some recoverables there, there's an awful lot that, that isn't recoverable. And let's just actually start taking action, prosecution type action.
Thank you. Counselor Scholar?
I guess just as a general comment and in light of us wanting to be more efficient and therefore run without as many costs. I, we did, at the workshop, we got the chief executive and executive and managers view on if we wanted to keep costs down, these are the things that we would no longer be able to deliver. But I, to me, that missed the point a little bit, that it's actually how do you deliver all of that without increasing costs and by taking consultants out? For example, we have in the last week come across a couple of things that at the Audit and Risk Committee last week, we found that there's a life insurance for all staff that are working over fifteen hours a week, which hopefully is a, some, a perk that staff are valuing. Because number one, it has to be administered. Number two, it's got a fringe benefit tax. So it's, it's not just a matter of additional benefit. But then we found that it's a seven hundred thousand policy, insurance policy over the last five years. So it's quite a big cost. And then we found out in the media, I did first about a, a contract for four hundred and seventy thousand for coffee for the new building, which we don't quite know the detail of. But I guess these are things that, and of course, the consultants that we keep, I keep talking about. And so I'm just appealing to you, Marty, to say, like, the, I think those two things should have been things that were raised with us that are maybe nice to have, that I'd really like to know, it'd be great if, so the coffee cost, and I know we've had some answers on that, but at the moment, supplying really nice coffee to staff is, is really nice for the staff. But we are in a city and trying to build vibrancy. We'd actually like your six hundred people to be going out and walking in the street and going. um, and walking in the street and going and actually looking, um, being new customers for our cafes that are desperately needing new people. And so to me, I just, my question is, are those things really being considered? Um, I know it's, it's making it a bit of a tougher environment for people, but unfortunately, that's where we are and that's where the people of Toronga have been for five years. Um, and I just really want to say, can we make sure that those sort of benefits, I'm, I'm pretty sure that maybe half the people listening to this um, would say, well, I don't have coffee anyway, or I always go out for my coffee. So can we ask that it's essential, you know, it's really important that they do have really nice coffee? Can we make sure people appreciate the cost of from taxpayers, from ratepayers money, the cost of having life insurance? And to me, it would be something you can't take it off the people here, but it's something that going forward wouldn't need to be there and can we do, yeah, and the consultants, I've just, I've already said, so. Marty, can I just have your view on?
Through, 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 um, the mayor. Look, I, I, I think any, any issues that relate to staff benefits, um, and terms and conditions of work, I'm very happy to have the conversation. And I think if you are, uh, for that information, I'm happy to provide it. It's probably best that we have the conversation um, in, in a, in an environment, um, uh, what you might call a more, um.
Less public.
Yeah, less public environment. I think those are the sorts of things that, um, as you would know, uh, probably help fairly dear to staff and I, I think it needs to be a sensitive conversation that we have in a less public forum.
Hundred percent, and I, and I don't, I don't want to be seen as the man who takes benefits away, but it's, it's more that we can't, we can't always ask about things because we don't know about them. So I would of, I, you know, I would have anticipated that at the workshop last week when we were talking about what can we do to ease the burden on our ratepayers, I would have expected some of these to be put on the table, some of these, and I don't know what they are, Marty. I don't know what makes up the hundred and seventy-four million that is employee costs and consultants. But quite a lot is in there. So there's quite a lot of, and I don't, so I'm gonna, we, we're gonna need you to be a little bit more open with us about what things might be able to be put on the table. And I'm not taking away benefits for staff. I don't want to do that, but I just, this can, makes me concerned that we're not being told what we need to know to actually govern this organisation.
Right, well, I think it's helpful that we have the facts and, and, um, I, I guess coming to these meetings, I haven't been in a position where I can respond to the questions as they arise. But more than happy to have the conversation if I know what the issues are and provide you the information so we can talk on the basis of facts.
Thank you for that. And, uh, yeah, I thi- I think that just talks to the, you know, we, we sort of talked about the, the culture of spending and that every dollar does count, um, and it is, it is ratepayers' money and, and we've just got to be cognisant of that when, when we are spending, that, um, you know, it's not, not just a, an endless money pit. Um, going back to, uh, page one thirty-three on cemeteries, um, you know, th- this, I guess, concerns me that we're losing money, um, you know, year on year. So my question is, do we take into account, you know, when we bury someone in the, in the cemetery, that we're gonna have to maintain that for the next hundred and fifty, two hundred years? Um, and do we, do we sort of, uh, I guess, take that into account into our, into our costs?
That's a tough question. Um, I, I think that, um, what we do every year is assess the cost for the, for the, for the future year. What is it gonna cost to maintain a cemetery next year? Um, I, um, as a random question, I'm not quite sure how, how I'd assess it for the next hundred, a hundred and fifty years, but, um, we do take into consideration the cost, the cost of maintenance of the, um, the cemetery, um, all of the after-hours and everything else. But as I said earlier, we also, we also, um, do some industry standard to make sure that we're, we're charging an amount that's competitive, you know, that's, that's, well, we are above, but not too far above our, um, neighbouring councils. I don't think I answered your question.
Well, I think the answer is yes, because essentially it hasn't been any rate funding for the last five years and it's a user, user pay and, uh, I, I think we would factor in the cost of maintaining cemeteries. It just means that um, for those that, um, yeah, it, it means those that are dying essentially pay for those that have died.
Yeah, I guess while there hasn't been any rates funding, we've made some quite significant losses, um, you know, around, around seven hundred million dollars, um, over the last, well, that's, sorry, that's seven, yeah, sorry, seven hundred thousand over the last, uh, well, that's, that's sort of par- partly projected, but, um, yeah, I, I think, I think we, we just need to just be sure that we are covering it, because I'm, I'm not sure that the rate payer should be, should be funding, um, you know, people forever going forward, so.
No, I agree. We need to make sure that our user fees and charges, um, cover those costs.
I think we did hear though, that, that's actually something we have to do under legislation, that we have to keep them forever.
Yeah, but we can charge for the.
Just, so on cemeteries, and I'm not sure what page, but we did hear when we, we did the excellent visit out to the Pies Par cemetery, um, there was quite a big plan for changes in capital, um, uh, capital improvement and I don't think, and I think I saw a Foster's contract has been signed, but I don't know if we have had a business case on that or I don't know what's been approved and I would like to have, yeah.
So, um, I don't know if a date's been set, but we're certainly bringing back, um, the, the concept of what we want to upgrade to councillors in the near future. One that has been committed to is we have purchased a cremator, which will be back, uh, which will be in the country, I, I think mid-year. So, um, the, the contract that has been let, and it's been a project for a while, that will be for Foster's because they're a C C, C P P partner. So they will, um, they will build the building around the cremator that's true here, I think mid-year. But the rest of it, we'll bring to council.
Okay, great, because we heard that this building was going and that was gonna place and things, so we didn't. Okay, great, thank you.
Will that, will that be before they start the building? We'll get to see that.
Yeah, well, we can certainly show you what the cremator, what the, the building that's holding the housing, the cremator looks like. And then, um, Bill, bring to you all of the plans for stuff we haven't, you know, that hasn't been contracted yet.
Other one for the cremator, will we see that as well? Yeah, thank you. Um, you know, just a comment on marine facilities on one thirty-five is we need to find a way to get more revenue for that, because that's yeah, eating away. And um, yeah, just on city operations on page one thirty-nine. Again, just, just trying to understand the, um, the jump in, in employee-related costs. They don't seem to equate to the jump in, in the F T Es, um.
Agree, very well paid people.
Yeah.
Um, so, like, the number one one six is, is incorrect. Um, and that, but the, the dollar value in the, um, tables is correct. If you remember that we had that conversation probably a few months ago, so there'll be an extra fifty-three employees that will cover those four contracts that we're bringing in-house.
Okay, no, that, that totally makes sense. Thank you. So Scholar?
Back to page fifty-two. Um, just on the, um, mm, the Ho- Mount Holiday Park. We just had a, it was a conversation that we had at the, our meeting with the Moa Trust and they talked about whether that was, um, whether the revenue from that was, um, high enough, as in was, were, were, was, and, and how much went to them. There's a comment that some of it does, but I don't think there's a, there's an information. So I would just be interested to know, to understand more about the, I guess, the, the profitability of that beautiful piece of land and the understanding we've got with the Moa Trust in terms of where some of that revenue goes and how that relates to the, I think they also get a grant, which we talked about in a M O U with, with them and.
They don't get a grant yet. That was a conversation around that M O U, as to whether or not we would give a grant. Currently, the whole three hundred and thirty thousand dollars from the profit of the holiday park goes towards the upkeep of Moa. So that's an internal transfer that pays for our staff to look after Moa. And I have committed to providing far more detailed financials for you.
Including what the holiday park itself.
Yes, yeah, the whole, yes.
Thank you.
Uh, on one, page one forty-three, uh, city waters support services, um, again, just understanding the jump in consultants of about, uh, six million dollars. And obviously, we've got, um, uh, waters done well, but that seemed like a, a very expensive, um, consulting budget.
But so within that, within that, um, city water support is the transitional funding, that's called out, it was called out, um, must be in the text, but there's about three point five million for, um, a new system, the asset, you know, sort of migrating off the water care one and there's currently a placeholder of about four point two million loan-funded transitional budget. So some of that probably is flowing through that consulting line. There's not a lot of other consultant that normally sits in city waters, so it'll be only to do with transition.
Okay. In my papers, it's just got seven point seven of transitional funding without anything else. So that's, that's all basically going to consultants.
Yes, it's probably mainly in that line. I, I, yeah. Yes, we can provide a breakdown of consultants.
Okay, no, that would be great. See if there's any savings we can make there. Again, I guess that just goes back to that comment that, you know, apparently we've got the best water staff in the country, so, you know, can they not do some of that, um, that work, but. Um, and then again on one four seven, which is digital services, uh, and my question just there is obviously again very large, um, consultant spend, uh, but just wondering if we've considered, um, the, the cost of consultants v, um, employee-related costs and uh, whether, whether they're better in house or, um, or they need to be outside.
Uh, yes, we have. We, it's a regular exercise for digital. They have firstly, we use a panel arrangement so that there's a competitive process for each transaction. A lot of individuals provide technology services and in certain markets you can move them to permanent roles. Um, it does mean an increase in headcount for the organisation, so it's a balancing act to make sure we, we, we show the rate payer we're doing the right thing. Um, the panel was just reset in the last six months to get the most competitive rates.
Oh, thank you. Um, and that ends my questions. Councillor Scholar?
I'm gonna go to page smart growth, uh, page eighty-two. Um, so we've got contributions to smart growth, I thought were coming down and they're sitting at the same for four years.
So this is the Smart Growth Partnership, which is just in an agency account. Um, and then in the City and Infrastructure Planning Budget, which is Andy Meads' Budget Area fifty-one, that's where the T C C share is. So in here, revenue equals expenditure. The changes to that are made via the Chief Executives Group of Smart Growth. And while they've signaled they want to change and reduce the budget, they haven't yet made any decisions, so I can't reflect it until they do. Um, so that's where that's sitting at. So if that comes down, then the revenue in this activity comes down and the expenditure comes down and T C C share, which sits in the um, City and Infrastructure Planning Budget will also reduce. It makes sense. Because T C C is administrative agent on behalf of Smart Growth, so this is just the, the Smart Growth administrative agent function in here.
Quick follow-up on the Smart Growth. I'm just checking. Was, was, there's like a little error there in terms of what the split was between the councils, like, so it was eighteen for Western Bay?
No, it was forty, uh, it used to be forty-two, forty-two, sixteen, and then um, the regional council in Western Bay decided to reduce their dollars, shit, their dollars. And T C C retained our dollars, so that changed the proportion to that forty-five, forty, fifteen.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you.
So on page one thirty-five, uh, marine facilities. And just the comment that we changed, took the user fees away for boat ramps. So I don't know the quantum of what they would have been with, what, what sort of quantum would they have been if we hadn't made that change, please, on an annual basis?
About around three hundred thousand, three hundred and thirteen.
Three hundred and thirteen, okay, thank you.
Councillor Taylor?
Um, this is just general query and I'm specifically looking at the moment at Civic Complex, page one four five. Um, other operating expenses. Um, and I've noticed this on a few of them, there's some quite big numbers in there. And that's probably the limitations of a, a summary that we're looking at here. But I think when the number gets over a million, it'd be good if we had some kind of a, a breakdown with it, which would be quite helpful. But, um, six million bucks would be quite good to know what that was.
Going to page one forty-seven, back to digital. Um, we do, we've heard a few times that we haven't invested enough in digital. Um, and that we're sort of almost having to make it up, but then I see these numbers that um, there was quite a big investment, you know, like we're still talking about, um, costs of thirty-eight, fifty-one million, forty-six million and twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five. So I just wonder what that was spent of, on if we didn't invest the numbers didn't sort of make sense to me.
So, so a lot of the, the fifth, getting to the fifty-one includes those operational projects, because it's an actuals line that got, um, moved out of a capital budget into the consulting budget for that year.
Still thirty-six million the year before, so there's still quite a lot. It's not an insignificant amount that was being done the year before either.
No, no, the, the basic spend is, you know, is significant in digital. Um, in that previous year, um, I'm just trying to recall if that was a, a bigger portion was able to be capitalised, I'm not sure about that. So we sort of, it's only been in recent years that that change away from capitalising digital has come in.
Councillor Crowther?
Just a question on libraries on page ninety-seven, um, but I, I, it applies more generally. I'm just trying to understand with the balanced budget approach, like how, how we, um, figure out the surplus deficit scenario, because it looked to me like we were sort of, we were getting a little bit more in than we needed for libraries and then a little bit more in than we needed, and then we had a a forecast for this year, we will lose a bit. But then all of a sudden, we're at a, you know, we'll go up to four point two where we're gonna be in deficit. And I, I guess I'm just struggling around the very basic thing of when you allocate the rates and you know that presumably the cost increases are the finance costs for, towards Tumanoa Takia, I presume, starting or, um, and, and then depreciation costs have gone up, as you've said. So, uh, I guess I'm just trying to understand how these different compartments of the bigger budget, why we don't try to balance budgets there. Like, I, I, I guess, yeah, can you just, maybe if you pick up the gist of what I'm saying, you know, like, it just, it just seems a really like a number of them have very big deficits, something why are we, what's the point of that if, as seems to be the case that the mayor pointed out earlier, we just keep running them? Presumably, they just add up on the balance sheet. And that's why we have bigger finance costs attributed to it. I might be missing something, though.
Yeah, uh, no, I think there's, there may be.
Yeah, uh, no, I think there's, there may be some confusion in this particular set of accounts, um, because I can understand what your confusion is here. We've merged two, um, activities, one was an allocator activity, which is our customer se- service centre, and, um, the other was libraries, which were pretty much fully rate funded, and so the balance should always come to zero. And I think in that, it, it does, yeah, I'm sorry, I, I would probably say that we can table, we'll, we'll review this and table, um, anything at the next one, because it doesn't quite feel right, I would say that. Um, yeah, we, we would have a significant allocation that runs from the customer service centre aspect of this activity, uh, and I'll just have to check some other allocators and whether we've just yeah, contact centre, um, and I'll just have a quick look at the other allocators and get back to you in this meeting, otherwise we'll, um, send something out to explain that difference, because I'd expect a lot of that is allocated.
Q.
Follow-up, like, if you look at city centre development and partnerships, where it's just, you know, nine point two million, four point four, three point seven, six point five deficits. Again, is that allocator, or is that?
No, the city centre is the, um, group that was set up to deliver the capital at Tumano Wataki and city centre, so it was always going to be loan funded, that's why it will show us a deficit against operational expenditure, that was an intentional decision.
If, if I could just make a comment, like, the overall balanced budget document is effectively the summary of all that, so that, that will bring all of those things together, but, um, the, the, but, the the starting premise is to balance each activity, but there will be various reasons, like if there's a resolution to loan fund that, that, or, or there's interest on depreciation reserves, or there's depreciation that's not funded, for example, in transport, that will, will change that.
Uh, uh, Schola.
Just a general, um, question, I suppose, um, looking at, I, I think the com- the comments, you know, relative value, value for money or actual value, and so, you know, the things that aren't washing their face, so to speak, and then when we're going through budgeting or, um, reviewing, is there a, a sort of a, a template or a policy around, you know, understanding whether that activity is eighty percent and there's twenty percent funded, like, is there a, really good to understand, um, as we go out and talk to people too, what, you know, what the re- the reality is, and then what we, uh, you know, how that's looking after itself versus what rates will contribute to.
Absolutely, so revenue and financing policy effectively is, is the policy that covers the portions of rates going into an activity versus user fees. Um, that, that again will come to council as part of a long-term plan, plan process for a, for, for a full overview, but we can, um, I think it might be in Stella, but we can resend it so that it's top of the list, yep.
I think it's a really, again, it's a really, you know, we're, we're still being educated, and so for us to just have a feel and, and it'll, it, it's, if there's a policy and what we're expecting to get to, it's much easier to talk about that than just not knowing why we've got a deficit in that area, so that'd be good. Um, question on page one um, fifty-five, performance monitoring and assurance, I just wasn't sure what that team, I haven't, I don't think of, have I heard from that team? Just really to understand what the outputs are, oh, thank you, Alistair.
Uh, and on behalf of that team, they thank you for asking about them. Um, you would have come across them, a very, very small proportion is risk and assurance, so that internal assurance. But the other three functions, firstly, uh, the business intelligence, analytics and data. There's a team there that you won't have come across, but it's primarily management information. Secondly, G I S, so that's about another third of the team, the G I S team are normally on the road. So they scan the, the roads to see what pipes are under there before they're cut. They have, uh, one person who flies a drone. The drone is used to use for hydrological information, land formation. It all goes to the way we help people work out what they can do with land. And then finally, geospatial information, uh, which is a big part of our natural hazards group as well. The other part of the group is an enterprise P M O. So when we, uh, at some of the committees, look at the performance of our projects, rather than going to the project managers, there's a small team, I'd say it's three or four. What they're doing is they're auditing the projects, and there's a guy called James Woodward, who'll present to City Delivery, I think, on the performance of those projects using that data.
Thank you. Are we talking about the capital projects or just topics?
If you've got questions on the capital projects.
Oh, so the Memorial Park Cemetery, is that what it's called in Paize Park?
There is a project called Memorial Park Two Cemetery, I think, whether it's a, is it a walkways project or a?
Memorial Park Cemetery Master Plan Project with a two point four million spend. In all zeros, eleven sixteen. Page fifty-nine, says Memorial Park Cemetery Master Plan Projects.
Um, I haven't got there, but I'm sure, I'm sure that will be the master plan for the cemetery, the cemetery master plan that I've talked about.
Memorial Park is just a, well, that's what it's called, okay, right. And so just all of those costs, we're just, and just those haven't been approved yet because we haven't seen the business case for them, is that correct?
Uh, there will be some money in the year, next years, but we can, that will go through the annual plan process, you're right.
Okay, great, um. Then on signage implementation, we have asked about the eighty-nine thousand paid to consultant for those designs, and I understood, we were told that that was just a the cost, so that all future signs were consistent, but we've got a five hundred and seventy-three thousand in the next year um, as a capital cost, and I just wondered why that suddenly went up from a hundred thousand, so it's page sixty, sorry, about the middle. Signage implementation, fifty-five, eighty-seven, sixty, yeah. Forty thousand this year, a hundred thousand next year, five hundred and seventy-three the following year. It just seemed a lot of a jump if we weren't actually doing significantly more with signs.
I'm, I'm sorry, I can't, I'm sorry, I can't answer that, I'll have to get that information, five hundred for the year after.
Five, seven, three, eight, seven, five. Thank you, that'd be great, um. There's an odd thing on McLaren's Falls Park, but I see there was a transfer in and out.
That's, um, a property, that was the, um, the property that we purchased under this, um, property acquisition, and that space is in places, needs to refund that back into that account, so it's going from one end to the other.
Age sixty-one, Marine Precinct Renewal, eleven million.
So that's, that's part of the, the Wharf redevelopment.
And the two point five the following year is the rest of that. Then, just the bulk fund opex, it's goes from fifteen million down to ten, up to nearly seventeen, down to four. It just seems a very, it just worried me that that looks like the sort of a balancing figure that's makes a budget balance, if necessary.
I think just in terms of the post-two thousand and twenty-six year, um, what we've done in a lot of those projects, just move them out where they've been adjusted for in the annual plan year, um, subject to council looking at those later years, either through the next annual plan or long-term plan. So there, there won't be a, a lot of detailed analysis done on those, those numbers in twenty-seven and beyond at this point, because that will come back to council in future meetings.
Then there's a, just under that, five hundred and thirty-three thousand, he only, it's next year and no other year for project and programme management system.
That will be subject to a prioritisation of the digital services programme, so again, that will come back.
Oh, so just on page seventy-one, parking management, um, does, does that include the airport or is the airport separately?
Separate.
Okay, right, sorry, thank you.
Counselor Morris.
May have been, may have been covered already, but just in terms of, uh, the recommended resolution D approving twelve and a half percent as the baseline, uh, and we're going to have further discussions on the third of March. Is that resolution premature when we don't know what the impact of ten percent is? So I'm just wanting us to set a, a baseline based, excuse the double based, um, that's not an instrument, by the way, based on the, the right numbers and the right information. So I think it's, it's easier to, to adopt a higher number as the baseline, uh, until we've got a feel for where things are, so I'm just wondering if, if D is better on the third or the eleventh.
I thi- I think what that's doing is it's setting the baseline, and then any decision we make on the third will impact that potentially down. So it's kind of, if we want to get to ten, these, this is what you've got to do to get there. Yeah, so. Well, I thi- I think that is what, what the third is about, we're saying, we're starting here, uh, and right now, we're, whatever we are, twelve and a half. Um, and if you, if you reduce that, you take that out, you do this, then we get down to to that.
Through the, through the chair, if I can add, um, that, that's effectively, the twelve and a half is what the financials are based on that is in this information pack. So that's effectively what, what, why it refers to that.
Through the chair, I think the other thing is that, that is your current vision of the budget, so then it's that we're not looking to put additional things in, it's your your, your point, which is supported by all the underlying information, and that from there, then you might make choices about other things that can reduce it, so that was the thinking. But so then at least it's an, an understanding of what forms the budget, and all of these things are in it, and you're accepting that, noting that you'd love to see it go down, and then we're really just moving from there down, not having, opening a whole budget conversation about everything else, yeah?
Counselor Crowther.
I have the theme of that, um, but without the, the humour, the, the musical jokes, whatever, um, that, Catherine, the number four, uh, under the executive summary, where it says, um, hence twelve point five percent whilst outside the limit remains less than the total amount of rates plus levy, which has, is, oh, wh- which is in the long-term plan. Um, any, any amount exceeding that would need to be noted. Now, I've got two issues with that, one is I don't believe twelve point five percent is, is less, it is the absolute highest that it would be, um, depending on the rounding. Um, but the second point is that it was ten point three percent, and we heard in the workshop that the I F F would now, if, if, let's assume we had gone ahead with the I F F, um, you know, we, that would have been true, but we didn't, and we claimed the kudos for doing that, so the the question is, 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 when we talk about a baseline, that's one thing, but when we talk about that number four, wouldn't it be fair to say that that the, that it was ten point three percent plus however we funded the one fifty-one point five million for Tumano Wataki, which now is actually only costing us one point two percent, so eleven point five is is the sort of, the equivalent amount of money.
Uh, that, we, we did talk about this the other day, that you, like, we're, we're comparing to the long-term plan, and that was, that was the, you know, that is what was in the long-term plan, anything that we can save under that is a bonus for a rate pass, so that is the, that is the baseline.
But I, but I think that's the point, I, I'd like to be transparent around it, what was literally in the long-term plan was ten point three percent. There was some people in the community would have been cleared up enough for whatever reason to look at I F F and read the fine print, but the number in the plan was ten point three. We can definitely justify any range of those numbers, ten point three, eleven point five, or twelve point five, in, in our minds. But to me, the idea is we shouldn't be putting in a, in an agenda, something which I believe is a bit misleading, I, I believe in future, I'm not, I'm not quibbling about this, but in future, it'd be good to just lay it out really clearly and say the rates in the L T P was ten point three, and have a separate number, I F F was, you know, um, two point two. That we've now financed, financing that and claiming the kudos, and that's one point two. So we're now at eleven point five, but we need a bit of extra spending, so we're now back to twelve point five, so they can follow the whole journey, and they can, they can agree with you or not, whatever, but, um, Mr Mayor, but, but the point is it's all transparent, and we can all have our own views on it.
Yeah, I guess for me it is pretty transparent, because in the long-term plan, you've got ten point three plus the two point two is twelve point five, and that was the limit that we set, that we would not go above what was allocated in the long-term plan, if any savings under that, that's, that's a separate figure.
Yes, putting it another way, is there any downside to doing what I'm suggesting, given that I have personal experience of a number of people saying, your rates increase is going to be ten points, ten point three percent, it's in the plan.
Or we can, we can lay it out as, as it's a ten point three plus a two point two, that's if that, you know. Yeah. Well, I, yeah, I think it's pretty, like, in my mind, it's pretty clear that, you know, like, that that it's, it's two numbers, which is the I F F plus the, um, yeah, plus the, the rates, but.
If you can separate it out, I, I personally think that'd be a lot better, and we get away from the whole thing about, you know, we're trying to have a bob each way, which is potentially what I might think.
Oh, yeah, per- personally, I think it's more confusing to say, well, it was twelve point five, but now we're saving you X amount, and because, you know, that's not, you know, I think what we talked about was the rate was one percent less, but then we've only borrowed, or we've only got the thirty million or whatever it was that we've borrowed, you know, then you've got to know the borrowing figures. It becomes very complicated, yeah. All right, well, thank you, staff, I think that answers all the questions. Um, I think we, we just put the resolution up. Uh, Counselor Taylor.
Um, I'd like us to consider taking C out of the, um, resolution. I think we need to get more information on that, and, um, probably get some feedback from, um, A V News on exactly what they're thinking.
Okay, so we've, um, yeah, we've asked for that further information, so that can come, that could come on the third, uh, once we have that information, so if we put the resolution without C. So you're happy to move it, Rod? Yeah. So moved by Counselor Taylor, um, seconded by Counselor Morris. Um, yeah, once we take out C.
Just move it.
Uh, Counselor Taylor, would you like to talk? Counselor Morris.
Uh, no, thanks for the opportunity to speak, um, I, I do have some sympathy with Counselor Crowther's position on this, because while the, um, the cost of interest was higher on the I F F, uh, and it's not so great now that it's back on balance sheets, uh, the operational, the opex requirement of council has increased at the same time. So I, I, I do understand the need for transparency about that, we've got to win by getting less interest, but that's been offset completely by an increase in operational expenditure to the same amount. So, um, yeah, I think, I think we've got to be careful claiming credit for it when, uh, uh, the operational requirement has gone up.
Counselor, uh, Baker.
Yeah, just quickly, um, and for public interest, particularly residents in the Sovereign Ward of Welcome Bay, that the, um, no, just kidding, that the deferral of the expenditure on Tarder Road doesn't prohibit the project completing on time and on budget, Keela.
Anyone else like to talk? Um, in that case, yeah, I'd just, just like to reiterate, um, you know, that to get to this place already. that to get to this place already, we've had to take out twenty-nine million dollars out of our OpEx budget. Uh, and, you know, it's, it would be great going forward. Um, you know, if, if every dollar is, is spent wisely and, and these budgets, we, we ultimately want to come in under the budget. So, you know, that's probably a, a message to our staff. If you can deliver it for, for less, um, and do the same, um, you know, that's, the, the budget's not a target. It's a, it's a, it's a ceiling, um, like we've, like we've done with these rates. Um, and we'd love to see, see these things come, come under if, if possible. So, uh, I, I don't think we need to talk too much more about this. We've, we've gone through, um, you know, fairly well. But, you know, we, we do need to start looking, you know, line by line and, and taking every saving we can uh, so that, that we can, uh, you know, reduce, reduce that, that, especially that, uh, OpEx budget going forward. Um, but also the capital programme, um, every single one, we're looking for wins. So that's what we want to start delivering for our people. Any further discussion? Right, therefore I'll put the motion, um, as on the screen. Uh, ask all those in favour. Those against, uh, that is carried. Thank you very much. Um, so that ends our, um, public session for the day. Uh, and we have a couple of publicly excluded items to, um, to talk about. So I now call for a mover and seconder to go into publicly excluded, uh, Counselor Schola, Counselor Baker. Uh, uh, now, um, I put the recommendation that the public be excluded from the following parts proceedings of a meeting. Um, we have a table, uh, for the, the reasoning for that. Uh, all those in favour? Those against?